I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for March 22nd, 2023. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alden?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Muncie?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda changes this afternoon? I'm hearing none. We have no guest speakers. So we will go right into our first public comment period of the afternoon. For those of you, first of all, thank you all for coming. It's great to see such a large turnout for one of our workshops. It's a rarity to have a lot of folks here and obviously we all know why we're here. But if you're not familiar with the workshop process, the city council, you know, we sort of have gotten into this rhythm now where we, you know, we do a strategic planning session every, every kind of winter time or, you know, after the election. And we start to work on the priorities, things typically that are priorities then come into the workshop. They get discussed in the workshop. It's an opportunity for the council to kind of discuss things in, within the Open Meetings Act kind of format, of course, but it allows us to discuss things in a kind of a more, a more less formal manner where we don't have to make motions or amendments or things like that. We can have a bit more of a free flowing conversation. And it really helps us in the deliberative process. So this is not a meeting where we make votes. We don't take votes or anything like that. We really discuss some of the things that we expect are likely to come before the council for, you know, for policy action for a vote. So it's just like our city council meeting in terms of being open. That's why we have public comment periods, you know, both at the beginning and near the end of the meeting. And the way it typically works in a council meeting and it's the same for a workshop is, if you would like to make public comment, please state your name, where you reside. Limit your comments for this first public comment period to items that are on the agenda. And limit your comments, please, to three minutes. And then we have a second public comment period, which is more wide open. You could make a comment on anything you want. March Madness. It's wide, it's wide open. And once again, that would be a three minute limit. And also for the folks on the call as well, on the Zoom, please do identify yourself by name, even if your name is on the screen and where you reside. This helps the clerk create a good set of minutes for our meeting. So with that, I typically open it up to folks that have made the effort to come here in person and with that, I'm open to any comments on agenda items only. Please.
My name is Mark Sherry. Live in 6447 on 140th and Lake Town Township. Not a voter in the city. I have lived in the area for, since 92, I think, 91, 92. You know, and I've seen lots of changes over, over time. And, you know, and I'll hold my opinion on the, this change that you're talking about, the moratorium on, on short-term rentals. I'm here to ask if a house is under, currently under construction, can the owner apply for a short-term rental for that property before the property is finished? And the reason I'm saying that is because I'm currently building a house for someone who bought property over on Frederick Street. And his, part of his reason for investing in that property and building houses because, you know, he planned on putting it in the short-term rental program. You know, and, and when I heard about the short-term rental, the moratorium on it, possible moratorium, I don't know if it's done deal yet or not. You know, that's, you know, I have concern for not only myself on the project, but, you know, for my customer. You know, because he's, and he's investing over a half a million dollars in this community. And he's, you know, if there's a moratorium on it, he can't do short-term rentals. You know, he's, you know, excuse my language, he's screwed. So with all that being said, you know, my question is, can a building, can a house that's currently under construction apply for a short-term rental? And hopefully get that in before the moratorium takes place.
Thanks for that, Mark. Anyone else in the audience that would like to offer a comment, please?
My name's Allison Maxwell. My husband and I just purchased the old Sagatuck Fish Camp in Lucy's, 149 Griffith Street. We just closed on March 10th, which was less than two weeks ago, and we found out an hour after we closed that this short-term moratorium was going to possibly be a thing. If you don't know the building, there's a restaurant downstairs and then there is a short-term rental upstairs above, and the previous owners used it as a short-term rental last year and I believe this year as well. They had the certificate. But it doesn't transfer ownership. What I'm concerned about is I put our application in on the 14th of March. I am concerned that if you guys do put the moratorium in, that it's going to affect the restaurant business that we do. We wanted to stay open all year round. My husband and I live in Paw Paw. We have another restaurant in Matteawan called Bird Dog. And then we have a restaurant in Plainwell called Dog in the Bank. So we come here often, especially in the winter and fall months. And we see a lack of restaurants that are open. We, what we do best is we cater to locals. We're not super familiar with tourism, but we want the tourists, obviously. But more importantly, we want to be able to stay open all year round and cater to the locals and be a staple during the fall and winter months because it does feel more like a, we always say it feels like a Hallmark movie down here in the winter months. And we like the culture that you guys have, you know, kept. I feel like if the short-term rentals, at least in our situation, if we're not able to do it, we are going to be forced to close in the winter. That was going to kind of be a way for us to capitalize on the extra cash in the summertime and be able to, you know, keep the doors open in the fall and winter, especially January, February, March, when it's slow and, you know, you all go on spring break and nobody really goes out to eat as much. So if you do, I understand the short-term moratorium possibly needs of it. I just hope you guys consider A, the commercial district, and B, the people that have already put in applications and people that, we had no idea about this. We found out, like I said, an hour after we closed when we were sitting at breakfast at Penny Royal. We almost had a heart attack. And I came in and I spoke to Ryan and then I spoke to Jamie, which I don't believe is here. And they assured us that it could possibly be fine, but it's just, it's unknown. We plan on opening in October, which as you guys know is kind of a slower time. And I'm, I'm concerned if you guys wait nine months and put a hold on our application and other people's application, that we're not going to know what to do. It impacts how we roll out our business because we wanted it to be a package deal. We want both things to, you know, pair with each other. And if we're put on hold, oh, does that mean I'm done?
Yeah.
Okay. That's okay.
Welcome.
But thank you and actually welcome. Is anybody else in the audience that would like to offer a comment?
Well, I guess I'll get up now.
Jane Underwood, 130 Perryman Street. I've been around here a long time. Just look at my face and I'm worried about the future of our community. Don't laugh too hard. Please. I'll talk to you later. I think we have to find out how many short-term rentals we actually have in the community before we can decide what we're going to do long-term. Been talking to people in a number of communities along the lake shore. And they all seem to have similar fears that their towns are going to be ghost towns in the winter. And drunken bridesmaids, to quote a friend of mine in the commercial record today, in the summer. I've had some unpleasant experiences with people renting short-term in my area. I've had to talk to people. Luckily now, one across the street. The owner, I know his mother. His wife's aunt, they're both good friends of mine. I have his cell number and he's promised me anytime there's a problem, he will take care of it. But I don't think everybody has that situation. I really think we need to have a moratorium and get a handle on it. Awful lot of people are trying to get their licenses now. But we also have to do something to protect the people that are renting these short-term rentals. There was a gentleman who called in last week regarding a fire. I heard about it. It's right over the hill from me. Whole group of people could have been killed because that building had not been thoroughly inspected. And the fireplace had not been taken care of. So I'm hoping we're going to get this done. So people coming here can have a safe vacation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to offer a comment? Please, if you don't mind, step forward so people can hear you and if you could share your name and residence, that'd be great. Thank you.
Name is Richard Doherty. Me and my sister, I've been coming here. We have a house over on Park Street. I've been coming here. My grandfather built the house over there in 79. The, I've been coming up here since I was a little, little kid. Recently, through some deaths in the family, we inherited the house. It had been in some serious disrepair. So we took out a loan to be able to fix up the house. Our plan was to rent it to be able to at least cover the cost of the loan and then we can still come here and vacation, leave the family home here. And then we just found this out last week and we're mid, mid-project. So it's, you know, we're just kind of concerned and that's why I'm here because this will be kind of devastating for us. I'm paying on these loans and we essentially forced to sell the property if we can't rent it this summer. So that's essentially our, our concern. We've been coming here you know, a long time. You know, I used to work at Toulouse on the summers and so it's, I just wanted to voice my, you know, concern and see what, see what's going on.
No, thank you for coming. Other folks in the audience that would wish to, Andy? Ladies first.
Hi, I'm Sheri Tidalde. I am a resident of Sagatuck and first of all, I want to say that I'm kind of like a bull in a china shop when I'm, you know, upset with something. So, but I put everything down on paper, hopefully nicely. I don't know if it's appropriate to hand it out now, but just a couple of points that I, to you guys, not, not to everyone. But we had a survey done. And apparently we're not listening to the survey, so I don't know the value of a survey. I don't know if the cost is worth having a survey, if we're not going to pay attention to it. This town is a tourist town. That is our only, only industry. And we need to promote that instead of putting in a moratorium, which is a slippery slope that tells, that sends a message that we don't want tourists here. And there are, there are rules and laws and ordinances to control tourists and to control homeowners. They need to be put into place. We need to do that instead of punishing these people who live here and depend on this income. If this goes through, it could possibly hurt our schools. Our tax bases are going to go down. That we're going to have fewer non-homesteaded properties. Our schools are going to suffer. Most people in this community who depend on tourism dollars, whether they, whether they be a waitress or server at the Butler or a maid at one of the inns, they depend on this community. Your short-term rental people have people who clean. They buy a lot of things from the, from the retail, the people in the, in town here. Our retail will suffer if this happens. I would like you to be more considerate rather than placing a moratorium into effect. Do the study, do the math and bring it to the people. I think just the show of force in this meeting should tell you something. I think most of the people here don't want to see a moratorium. So I ask that you consider everyone rather than maybe, I don't know if somebody's got a noisy neighbor or something, you know, control it. Don't punish them. May I?
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah.
And like I said, forgive me, I'm Italian.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else that would, go ahead, Andy?
Hello, I'm Andy Crash, 904 Alligan. I've lived here 40 some years. And a couple of points. First of all, I, I strongly encourage a moratorium and would prefer to see everything capped right now. There's plenty of bludgeoning around here. Last summer, I didn't notice our tourist industry being hurt at all. A couple of points I'd like to make. When I bought my house, it was in a residential district. It was not in a business district. And when someone's running a business next to your home or even in your neighborhood, it affects the quality of your life. That's not what you buy a home for. Okay, a second, the second issue I see that pertains is simply safety. People rent out the upstairs of their garage as any old place they can. And if you're going to rent something, it should be safe for the public to rent. And there should be public inspections of that property like every other city has. And, and that pertains to fire safety, egress and just general, even the ability to lock the home behind yourself. So those are the points I'd like to make and that's all.
Thank you, Andy. I saw another hand. Please approach.
I have a place over on Brook Street and I actually live over in Fenville, Hamilton area. I've been renting my place out on Brook Street since 2015. For the first two years that I was renting the place out, I had no idea that I was supposed to have any kind of inspection or certificate or anything like that, which I take as a failing on from 2017, I guess, or 2015 to make that note, to actually give that acknowledgement, give that information to folks. Once I found out, I immediately did it, taking care of it. You know, I've got the certificate through 2025 at this point or whatever it is. But the thing that I've noticed, I don't quite understand what the goal of the moratorium is. When I started renting out in 2015, I did no business over the winters. October through March were dead. Over the years, October through March, I am booked out every single weekend, if not the entire week. And that's not just my house. That's my neighbor's house, the neighbor behind me and the neighbor across the street are Airbnbs as well. So over the last eight years, I've seen an increase in tourism to this town in the winter. But then I hear all the time that, oh, the wind, it's dead in the winter. The restaurants are closing in the winter. There's nothing to do in the winter. Why are we talking about a moratorium on bringing people into town rather than talking about how we can actually keep people coming to town year round and keep the restaurants running year round and keep it, make it more, make it make more sense for somebody to live in the township or to live in Fenville to work at the new restaurants, the new Lucy's, rather than rely on seasonal help that doesn't want to have to pay to come down from Holland or Grand Rapids or, or everything all the time. So I really just want to understand what we're trying to accomplish with the moratorium. If we are, to somebody else's point, a town that relies entirely on tourism.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience that would like to offer a comment? If not, I'm going to go to, oh, please come on up. Yeah.
My name is Bill Underdown. I live in Douglas at 62 Wall Street. I'm a Realtor, Century 21 affiliated in Douglas and I've, I've been here about 20 years. But I guess my question that I would ask is my kickoff question is, how many of us all came because we originally stayed in a short-term rental and ended up living here? I know all of my clients that I have currently now or have sold to came because they were here in a short-term room. And I'm just worried that we are cutting off the, the ability to bring people in that will be here full-time. So that's one of the things that I'm concerned about. I also would like to see us, do the more studies, get more, more information and data and then figure out what we need to do to control the problem. So that's my thought.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Are we taking any Zoom?
Come on forward, please.
Hey, my name is Heather Conley. Thank you everyone for your time here. I just want to add a little to this. I'm also with Century 21 Affiliated in Douglas and I'd like you to consider the impact with any buy and sell throughout this moratorium. The only option anyone has is a seller that is currently renting their property, whether they're renting to the full, whether they're renting to cover their property taxes because they're retiring in two years and plan to move here for whatever reason. The only option is to cancel all of their rentals, which then creates a ripple effect. Okay? All of those people that have been looking forward to visiting our town for the last year, whenever they booked now have no choice. There's no other place to rebook. And if we create a fear about this, about difference in property values, whether it will impact or not, I don't think we have enough information to make such a drastic change right now. I do hope that the task force does whatever, you know, as long as it takes to do this. I don't understand what a moratorium, how this applies to what the task force is doing. Short-term rentals are not a new concept here. This entire town has been based on tourism, probably as long as I've been alive. So I just want you to consider some of the other impacts here for our entire town. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for the comment. Yeah, come on forward.
My name is Dan Panazzo and I live on 727 Butler Street. It's the house that looks like a haunted house right now because I'm redoing it. I pulled down the vinyl siding and it looks pretty bad. It won't. Putting a fortune into that place because I hope I can use it as a rental. Part of it, the back. I'm literally surrounded by rentals. One in the back, one on each side. On Butler Street, across the street, rentals. If you have a problem with noise, make an ordinance. Don't restrict the rentals. Have you driven around town and seen the empty buildings, the restaurants? We need more short-term rentals, not less. Solve the problem. If it's noise, deal with it. It's traffic, deal with it. That's all.
Thanks for the comment. Thank you. Any other takers in the audience before I go to the Zoom? Yeah, come on forward.
Now you gotta come up.
Yeah, we, we need it for the benefit of, yeah.
So hi, everybody. I'm Scott Solberg and we have the cottage at 720 Park Street. I'm not here to talk about short-term rentals. I will say, listening to the commentary, the reason we came here 15 years ago, this is a great town and it's clear everybody here loves this town and wants to do the right thing regardless of which side they're on. So it kind of does my heart good to see this in process. I'm here for a request to build a dock. We, I was here in November of 21. I tried to buy that little parcel that you all own. We all had masks on at the time. I understand that's not possible, but we just need approval from you all as the owners so that I can submit an application or DK Construction can so that I can move on with the state and potentially build a dock. It's within your limits. It's within the state's limits. It won't get built this year. But I'm here, if there's any questions, if you have any questions for me to answer, I, I'm, I'm here. And if you have questions later, I'm available. But I very much want to improve that property. It's beat up. The earthen steps that are going down are in disrepair. And I just need some assurance that I can do this to improve the property. And at the end of the day, when I'm dead, you all will own a beautiful dock.
No one hopes for that. Thank you, Dana.
And on that morbid note, I'll let others talk about.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much. Yeah, come on, please come on forward.
Hi, I'm Tammy Kerr from Century 21 as well. I actually have invested a ton of money in our community. I have purchased the Bird Center Resort. I have purchased the Bed and Breakfast at Lake Harbor. I have the house on the corner of Lucy and Holland. All of them were in disrepair. They were disgusting. I have put millions of dollars into this community because I support it. I sell real estate here. I have clients that love it, that want to spend time here. They want short-term rentals. They want to be here, just like I do. I raised four kids here. I have all of my cousins all now moving into this area. They're not moving into the city, but they're moving just outside the city and their kids are going to go to school here. So you're not looking at just Sagatuck. You have to look at the tri-community. You have to look at the township. You have to see how many families are moving there that are supporting the school system. It's just not here in this tiny town that you're hurting. You're hurting everyone. There will be no restaurants. There, there will be no clothing stores. There, there will be nothing here. If you put a moratorium on, that's going to kill the real estate business. Properties are, the values are going to go down 30%. If you get on the NAR site and you talk to anybody in NAR, they do not support this at all. And it is a common knowledge throughout the country what it's doing to resort towns especially. So I really hope that you take into consideration the people that live here, that support the community, that spend a ton of money investing in it because it's going to hurt us all. Like, I would want to sell and go somewhere else if this happens. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Tammy. Thank you very much. I don't see anyone approaching the podium here in the room. I don't see any other hands up. So we do have some hands on the Zoom. I'll start just kind of top left. Philip, if you could unmute and identify yourself and where you reside and please make a comment.
Hi there. Thank you so much. My name is Philip Palazzolo. I currently reside, my husband, husband and I currently reside up in Holland, Michigan, but we moved to the area two years ago to start a business venture directly related to the tourism industry. So my husband and I own Art Coast Properties. We are a luxury vacation property management company. So really taking pride in the homes that we manage, making sure that they are incredibly safe, not only for our guests, but for the neighbors as well. So it's been, it's been a scary thing to hear this whole thing happen after just starting a business, not even a year ago. My husband and I plan to and are currently avidly seeking property down in Sagatuck. But the tourism industry is what brought us to this area and how we fell in love with it. We got married at the top of Mount Bald Head. We stayed at the Wickwood Inn and many Airbnbs after that from living in Chicago. And I think Bill Underdown said it in a, in a really great way. I think most of us have all stayed in a short-term rental before actually deciding to move here, right? It's an incredibly important aspect of this whole community. I know the owners of Grow, I know Penny, Penny Royal, you know, we have all these people moving in from surrounding locations, surrounding cities because they see something in this area and rightfully so. And it's, and it's all built around tourism. I think by putting a moratorium in place would greatly, greatly impact so many aspects of this community. The workforce, people, people that drive into, to work at these places, bed and breakfast, short-term rentals, whether it's housekeeping or being a guest experience coordinator or, you know, different avenues, maintenance, you name it, our window washing companies, our landscapers. It's just such an incredibly important industry here that is employing so many people. And, and I think another person made mention too, there's, there's a lot of other things that we could be focusing on to get people here in the off-season. And and I think another person made mention too, there's, there's a lot of other things that we could be focusing on to get people here in the off season. We shouldn't be limiting the the rentals. We should be advocating for them because that's what's bringing jobs here. That's what's bringing long term residents here, not just short term rentals. I know I'm running down on time, but I appreciate the time and and thank you so much.
Thank you, Philip. Just we'll, we'll go just to the right. Brian Elmore, please unmute and identify your name and residence, please.
Great. Thank you. Brian Elmore, ninety five Ridgeview Lane. I'm a part time resident and also a short term rental owner. We rent our place out in the summer and use it all the rest of the time in the slow season. So, you know, we are big fans of Sagatuck in every aspect of it, whether it be the the prime tourist times of the summer or the cozy fun times in the winter. I have been part of all of the planning commission meetings, the workshops, the council meetings, sitting in, listening, commenting. I am in complete support of the work that the task force has been asked to do. I do think that we have issues in our community that need to be addressed, many of which are around lack of rules, lack of enforcement, and which also creates safety issues. I was, you know, sympathetic to the the comments around the fire that just happened. You know, our current ordinance, the only thing it really covers is fire compliance. We know from all various different meetings, we have lots of short term rentals that are happening in our community in a noncompliant way. A moratorium doesn't stop any of that. It just encourages more of that. Until we have an enforcement arm that can actually hold people accountable for any of these things, a moratorium is no better than the paper that it's written on. And all it does is do undue harm to people that are A, playing by the rules, B, making their living in this community through real estate, through hospitality, through businesses and all of that. Every single person that owns a home right now in this community that has short term rental or was eligible for short term rental, their property values are based off of that aspect. And for the next nine months or however long it goes, without any clarity to what the task force is even going to recommend, a moratorium puts every single one of us at risk and an undue harm. Because quite honestly, our tax base is based off the value of our house under that assumption. So by putting us in that position, we can't even sell our homes for what we would actually have been able to get before. Yet we're paying a tax rate that is assuming a certain value of our homes. So I would just ask the council to please consider not passing this moratorium, allow the task force to do the job that they've been asked to do. And once they get to the end of that, you know, look at the timing and the phasing in and how we might be able to hold people accountable for the actual ordinances that will be in place and the rules that we put into place by the task force. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Christine, go ahead and unmute.
Hello, my name's Christine. I'm run Wix Park or own Wix Park Bar and Grill at four four nine Water Street. I am a year round business open, always open, and in the process of opening the second bar, which I'm sure everyone's well aware of. I was completely happy to see that there was going to be a task force formed. I was like, cool. Love it. I'm going to apply to be on it. Love to give my ideas. Love to be a part of that. And then a week later, the moratorium is suggested. I I don't even understand how in running a business in anything like that, how something like that can happen so quickly. I mean, I talked to people in the community that were like, yeah, it's not cool. They're going to go on the task force and every, you know, I knew several people that were applying for it just to figure it out. Because I do, I do think there should be rules. There should be rules with everything we do. But this isn't like, this is just stopping Sagatuck in the tracks. If it wasn't for short term rentals during COVID, we would be nothing. So many people came out of the cities to live here in short term rentals so that they could be away from COVID, be in the open fresh air, and they found out about us. So therefore we got busy. Now, all of a sudden Sagatuck's too busy. That makes me irritated as hell when we have a slow season that we're not focusing on. Yeah, in the summer, it's crazy. We all know that. But when people are like, oh, just too busy, this is crazy. We need more and more and more. But by just stopping it, that's just not the answer. That's saying, oh, don't go to Sagatuck, go to South Haven. Don't go to Sagatuck, go to Holland. Oh, let's just drive right by and go up to Grand Haven. I mean, that is literally what's going to happen if this goes into place. And everyone's going to take their money elsewhere, which I say that a lot. Unless we keep inviting them, giving them inviting spaces, whether it's a rental, whether it's new restaurants, whatever it is, they're just going to keep driving up the coast and be like, okay, let's go to the next town. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Christine. Thank you. Steve Mans, you can unmute if you like, and I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot more from you also during our deliberative session. But go ahead, Steve.
Sure. I just wanted to, one, Steve Mans, five, six, eight, Yerick Sagatuck, and also Planning Commission Chair. The one thing that I wanted to just put out, I'm sure will be discussed during deliberation. But I've heard this numerous times during the public comments about a moratorium on short term rental. Maybe somehow that tagline got put out. It's really was a discussion about should there be a hold on new applications? We understand, you know, I know everybody on council and everybody who was part of planning commission, the absolute importance to Sagatuck tourism and the short term rental business. You know, the two hundred and forty plus short term rental licenses that we currently have in the city of Sagatuck are not in jeopardy during any hold on new applications. Transfers of properties, we've already said, would operate during the moratorium. They'd be subject to anything that comes out when the moratorium is over, once the task force has completed its work. There's pluses and minuses to having a stable base while the task force is working and trying to understand what is the best approach. But whenever I hear people talk about the stopping short term rental, that would be a disaster. It would never have even been discussed at the planning commission level. Everyone understands the importance of short term rentals to the community. Nothing will change with the existing ones. It would just be a temporary hold if that was something that we thought was valuable. You know, again, the other approach that we discussed, and you guys may decide here today during deliberation, is to get the third party consultant in place and find out if they think it's beneficial, you know, for the task force. You know, but it's, but the only thing I wanted to comment on was just to make certain that for those who had at least talked today or listening and did not speak, that were thinking that this was a moratorium on short term rentals, that is not the case. There would be no reason for anybody to drive by or not to book. Every license would remain in effect during the moratorium. It would be able to rent during the moratorium. And if nothing changes after the task force is done, other than just, you know, new regulations or ways that we will govern short term rental, then every application that was in a hold position would be processed and we would continue to move forward. So it's not taking a step backwards. It's just putting a hold into place. And I think all of council kind of understands that and many of the people who are listening. But for those who maybe didn't interpret it that way, I just wanted to take a few minutes just to kind of reiterate that once again, because I know we've done it at our previous planning commission meetings. But at the same time, I know there's still a perception that we're talking about short term rental moratorium versus new application. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Over to to you, Chris. Just please identify yourself, residence. Thank you. You'll need unmute, Chris. You'll need unmute, Chris.
She's trying to find it.
Oh.
There you go.
We we got you. Thanks.
Okay. Chris Peterson, Sagatuck, city of Sagatuck. And I think this is obviously just a wonderful time that we all have time to visit and get our ideas across. I would like to just comment on Mr. Adams's discussion right there. He said, this is not a moratorium on short term rentals. It's a moratorium on short term rental applications, which means that if you, as several people have said, if you wanted to sell your house right now when this moratorium goes in, you're going to get less for it when you list it than you would today. So I'm not going to just try to say it's property values or anything like that. Pretty much the price of your home right now is going to be less, is going to be more than what will happen with the moratorium parts. It is a moratorium on short term rental applications. There are no more going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Sarah, do you see any other hands raised? I don't either. So I think with that, we can get right into the meat of the matter. Number six A, which is STR moratorium on page two. We've got Ryan Cummins here. Obviously, you've noticed Chairman Mans is on the Zoom. And we've got at least three members of the planning commission here as well, which thank you for coming. But Ryan, we're going to turn it over to you to kick things off.
Thank you, Mayor, and and thank you, City Council members. Yeah, I'm going to be brief. I think we all know why we're here. I I know that all of you have read the materials in your packet and are are quite familiar with what's in it. So, you know, essentially, for you this evening is a draft police power ordinance that would impose a nine month temporary moratorium on the establishment of new short term rentals and the issuance of new certificates for the next, like I said, nine months. So this is a tool that's being brought to you for your consideration. A common tool that has been used in numerous communities throughout Michigan, throughout the country, tourist communities, waterfront communities, as a lot of communities are really trying to grapple with short term rental regulations. And you're doing that exact work through your your task force. So this is a tool, an option that you have to kind of put a pause on any new short term rentals while you evaluate your regulations and your zoning ordinances and then make some some decisions. At this point, those decisions are all in there. We don't know exactly which direction any of that's going to go. That's kind of the work that the task force has to do. The moratorium draft language that's before you kind of has a couple of exceptions. Normally with a moratorium, the moratorium is passed, that essentially would have stopped any applications that were in process from continuing to be processed. So the draft language that's before you has a couple of exceptions to that. In this case, there's a draft, the the language contains an exception for any short term rental certificates that, you know, would expire during the period of the moratorium, essentially would continue to be effective during the moratorium period and for a period of thirty days after the moratorium were to end. The concern when drafting this was that wealthy, you know, there's a lot of folks that could have a short term rental certificate expired during the course of a moratorium during the middle of a tourist season when certainly short term rentals do have their place in a in a tourist community. That 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 could have an impact on folks. And so there's some draft language that would essentially allow those to continue on under their current ownership and and certificate status. And then there, you know, there's some draft language initially with a kind of a March ninth cutoff, the planning commission, as you know, reviewed. This draft language has made a recommendation to you to impose a short term rental moratorium. Their recommendation is that essentially the cutoff date for applications to be considered would be the date, if you are so inclined to adopt a moratorium, would be the date of your adoption. So any applications that were submitted before that would be processed under our current processes that we have in place. As long as they're complete applications, they meet the zoning requirements, pass their fire authority inspections, and essentially they would be issued a certificate that would be good, you know, for a period of up to three years, absent any sort of change in ownership. So the draft that's before you this evening, you're welcome to make any changes that the city council deems appropriate. You're also welcome to decide as policymakers not to implement a moratorium at all. We're simply bringing this to you as a, as an option, a tool that you have, considering the goals and priorities that have been set, you know, for staff this year as you're taking on this issue. So happy to answer any questions you have as you deliberate and have your discussion.
Thank you for that, Ryan. I think with that, we can open it up to discussion among the council. So.
Lauren. I'd be happy to start, Mr. Mayor. We, right? So as we talked about forming the short term rental task force, the number one request I had as a council member is that an independent planning and zoning consultant who has expertise in short term rentals in the state of Michigan, that we hire that person to guide the group, the task force, and help with fact finding data and litigation issues. And I'm asking that we allow the independent professional to advise us on whether a moratorium is needed or in fact not needed or advised. With every ounce of respect for our planning commission, I'm just against a moratorium on the new applications at this stage in the game. I want our task force to be able to do their job and I want our hired professional to be given time to do the job that we're tasking that person with to find the right balance for our community. So I feel like we need our task force to do their job. We need the hired professional who will look at the data, will look at the facts, will dig deep into this issue in our community and do the right things as far as litigation and all of those things that could possibly come up. I want that hired professional to guide us. And if that hired professional says we need a temporary moratorium, because otherwise we're going to be in a world of hurt, then that hired professional is going to, you know, give us the best advice that that person has. But at this point, I'm not in favor of a moratorium at this stage in the game.
I'd like to piggyback on that, Lauren. Thank you. Yes. And I'd like to piggyback on that, Lauren. And also a question, is there a, do you have a plan of enforcing this moratorium? Like, do you have a fee schedule? Like, what happens if this does get passed and we find people renting without the proper license? Do you have any anything set up for that yet?
So yes, your your ordinances have a mechanism set up. So your, this council has previously set, established a policy for how zoning should be enforced. And so there's a policy guide on that. And you actually have ordinances in place for how we should handle violations of your ordinances. So typically, the first step is reaching out to the the property and letting them know of the regulations or moratorium and 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 hopefully gaining voluntary compliance. The next step that your ordinance is, you know, layout is essentially a civil infraction notice, which is essentially a a local citation. And there's certain fees that are set for that. The next step that they don't respond to a civil infraction notice would be an actual civil infraction that goes to the court. And then certainly we have other remedies that that we could follow up with through the courts to to bring somebody into compliance. So all those things are on the books.
Right, right. But also, have you done that yet to someone that hasn't been signed up as a rental? Have you found any houses or any places as you've, as you've done the data you have to find out who's a renter and who's not? And have you ever had to do that to anyone in our community?
I haven't had any short term rentals that were renting without a certificate.
Okay.
Brought to my attention, but we've had plenty of short term rentals certificates that have applied for certain circumstances that wouldn't comply with our zoning ordinance that we've had to work through some issues with passports being issued and they shouldn't have been, that we're trying to bring them into compliance now. That's that's been happening on a regular basis. Yes.
Yeah. And I'll finish, Mayor. And I have nothing else to say. I spoke at the planning commission meeting. So if you didn't hear that, you got some of my sentiment. I'm I'm listening and I'm hearing what most of our residents are saying. We're getting emails and we're getting folks coming to these meetings. So my vote will be directed towards what I'm hearing most of what our residents want. So I'm, right now, I'm not in favor of passing this moratorium.
Any other takers on the council?
I'm happy to go.
Go ahead.
So ideally, I thought that city council and planning could address this with planning firm. I was a big advocate for hiring professional planning firm. I brought in a lot of information and educated a lot of folks about what the planning firm does, how they've helped other communities, and I have a high regard for that. So I think that if we would initially gone that route, it would have been more expeditious and the moratorium wouldn't have been necessary. We did decided not to go that route of a task force. Now, the good news is the task force is still going to be guided by this planning firm. The more, the reason that there's a moratorium or a pause on new applications is to give the task force room to work. That's why we have it. That's why it's suggested. That being said, I am happy to take the advice of the planning commission, the planning firm that we are going to hire. I would like to know where we are at in that process. I don't want us to be four months out and hiring a planning firm. I know we had the RFPs going, and I would very much like to know where we are with that. But I think that I I would, I would be interested in what they have to say. And if I would, I would be interested in what they have to say. And if they say that no moratorium is necessary while the task force does their work, I'd be surprised to hear that. But I would respect their work. I think that they're the professionals. And I think that we do not need to recreate the wheel. We need to understand how we're doing, what we're doing, and and to take a very judicious approach. But I think that I would be open to hearing what they have to say as far as the moratorium date, and we don't backdate it.
Great. Any other council members have comments on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank everybody that's here tonight, as well as was at the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday night. I am the City Council Representative to the Planning Commission. Many of you were at that meeting. Again, I thank you for being here. This is why I'm on council, because I love to hear from my community. I hear from you out in the street when I'm walking my dog and riding my bike and whatever. But these meetings are incredibly important to me as a city representative, because I can, I can kind of get a good feeling where people are on issues. Unlike many of you, but not all, I didn't choose to live here. My family made that choice for me back in the eighteen eighties. My family's been here that long. And if I tear up a little bit, it's because I care about this place. It's in my DNA. But again, I'm here because my family made a choice to be here many, many, many years ago. And I'm grateful for that because it's been wonderful to me. It's been wonderful to my family. My daughter, who's in the public schools here, we have several other council members with schools and with with kids in the school. She's a beneficiary of this community, and I hope to pass what I've had in this community along to her. This is a hyper-local topic. Though the task force will be collecting information from around the country, I'm gonna be looking for results that are specific to Sagatuck and the citizens in the community of Sagatuck. Other communities have tackled this issue in the past. They've come up with different solutions. I don't know what the solution looks like for Sagatuck. At this point, the task force has to be formed, the professional consultant has to be hired, and then we can get, get work underway. I'm on the fence on a moratorium at the, at the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday. There were a lot of wonderful comments. The passion for this community is not just shared by, shared by many people. And whether you've been here two years, five years, seven years, one hundred and fifty years, people care about this place because it's a home. And I'm glad we're tackling this as a formal process. And I look forward to what the solutions are going to be identified through that process. And I thank the city staff and everybody that's been working diligently on this for us. I do want to talk for a minute about transparency because that has come up a lot. It came up a lot on Thursday night. I don't think there wasn't a speaker that didn't mention that word. In my experience, transparency is defined by our constituents and the community. It's not up to me to define what transparency looks like. Though I am responsible for doing everything possible is defined by the community to be transparent. Government transparency promotes accountability, and it's our obligation to share information with citizens that is needed to make informed decisions and hold officials accountable for the conduct of the people's business. I think the city has done a wonderful job pushing information out to citizens. There's a lot of effort to put things out in public meetings such as today. What I heard we missed the boat on Thursday was, and I experienced this, is I first learned of the March sixteenth Planning Commission Short-Term Rental Moratorium Agenda Item on Friday, March tenth. That was from a call from a fellow council member that asked me, Russ, what the hell's going on? That's the first I'd heard of it. That's not transparency in my, in my experience. I've since learned there's another council member that had the same experience, learned about the agenda item when the agenda was released. As I mentioned, I sit on the Planning Commission. I sit here at the council table representing the citizens. That didn't feel very transparent to me at all. And I heard that from a lot of people at the meeting, and I'm hearing a little bit of that today. Until March sixteenth, the idea of a short-term rental permit moratorium, thanks for clarifying on the call today, this is a permit moratorium, not a short-term rental moratorium, was not formally discussed by the Planning Commission and until today, not discussed at a public city council meeting. I don't know if there's a few of you who had good intentions promulgating this idea, but with poor execution, or if there's something more nefarious taking place here. I don't know. I'm just speaking from my personal experience, how I learned about this and how I have to respond to it. So I hope those comments are taken in the best nature. They're met with good intentions. I think we need to be doing better when it comes to this kind of transparency. So hopefully, that makes sense to people that have been listening and came to the meetings. I'm struggling with that transparency idea, too. We have a ways to go yet. So thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Garnet, Holly, any thoughts?
Okay. What I have heard here today, and I want to thank everybody that came and participated, everyone who's here on the phone. I have heard a lot of support for the Short-Term Rental Task Force pretty much unanimously. I have heard everyone say, yes, let's look at this issue. Let's have some data. Let's, let's get all of the stakeholders together. Let's do some work. So that is a very positive thing that I've heard over and over and over again from the comments. I also was struck by people talking about how interconnected we are. I was struck by Allison speaking, who is our newest, one of our new business owners, and how there's sort of a Rubik's Cube with her business and her short-term rental and sort of where things came up suddenly. I heard Jane Underwood talk about her relationship with her neighbor that she has this phone number and she can, can call this person. Everybody might not have that. I think that that is a, Tammy Kerr talked about how, you know, we have to think about what's going on in township. We have to, we, we are a community, right? We're all super connected. Douglas Township, Sagatuck. And, and we all have different roles and, and we all wear different hats. Some people are residents. Some people have, are residents with short-term rentals, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we all respect that there are a lot of different viewpoints in this room and that we're all very connected. I was struck by Nick, I believe. Is that your name? Brett, sorry. I wrote it down wrong. When you said, what is the goal of the moratorium? I think that's a, that's a really incredibly good, direct question. And I also have said publicly, I was very surprised. I, I was not aware that we were discussing a moratorium. I have the utmost respect for our Planning Commission. It does not please me to have to go against our Planning Commission because I think some of the most stellar people that I have met serve on that Planning Commission. It, it gives me no pleasure to take the position that I take. And I also heard Sherri Tadaldi and others point out, we have a one hundred percent tourist-based economy. We're not South Haven. We're manufacturing is our biggest economy. Since the turn of the century, we have been a tourist-based economy. We've had bed and breakfast. We've had rentals. We've had hotels. We are now dealing with the latest iteration of how people will stay in our town. And it has to be managed. I also heard Heather Conley and Brian Elmore talk about, and even Andy Koresh, although on a different side of the coin, talk about fear and talk about safety. And those are considerations that we need to think about. Talking about a moratorium injects fear into economic issues. But like Andy, I've owned my house for twenty years. I've been a permanent resident for thirteen years. Out of the eight houses around me, only two are locals. So I understood, I understand where Jane's coming from, and I understand where Andy's coming from. There's a lot of different viewpoints that have to be represented. And I believe that we need to slow down. I agree with your, with Lauren's suggestion of allowing the consultant. I would even go further and say, let's wait till the fall and wait till the task force is done. Because I don't feel comfortable making any decisions until everybody in this room and everybody on the phone feels like we have covered all of these topics publicly in the task force. And everybody has data and everybody has had a chance to come and say what they have to say. So I can't support a moratorium. That's all.
Thank you, Holly. Garnet, would you like to make?
Yeah, I have, I have two, two topics. First is the moratorium, and then there's this elusive transparency issue I want to address. But first, why we're all here on the moratorium. You know, when I first moved to town in twenty fifteen, I quickly was appointed to the Planning Commission. Thank you, Chris Peterson. And had four years of very good experience on the Planning Commission. It wasn't even a year into that time on Planning Commission that the issue of short-term rentals and how it affects the state all across the state, how, what was happening as short-term rentals just blew up. And the bigger issue is how to control something that's almost out of control? And what, what does it do to our community? So we are a council who has finally had the courage and a planning commission that's finally had the courage to address this issue, recognizing that it is the most difficult thing and the most uncomfortable thing to do. But we were elected to make difficult decisions and have difficult conversations and recognize that we would interact with our neighbors and our friends, and it wouldn't be comfortable. What's hard for me is the fact that, well, we have been such a pro-business council. And so to be suddenly, you know, folks are very much into you either are or you aren't. We're just, we're trying to find that happy middle compromise. And there really isn't one, unfortunately. Unfortunately, we're gonna have locals who live here year-round and have had their neighborhoods decimated, who will be upset. We're gonna have short-term rental owners who feel like bottom's gonna drop out of their business, who aren't gonna be happy. So, you know, please recognize, this is not a discussion that we invited. It was placed on our lap because the state legislature couldn't even decide. The state legislature, as early as twenty seventeen, with the support of the realtors, wanted to take away our local control and basically make that decision in Lansing. And you know that was gonna be no caps, no nothing, just up free for all. And I recognize that a majority of us have some kind of a finger in short-term rentals. I've recognized that. But we also have a responsibility to people who have grown up here and who've been born here and who live here full-time. So I appreciate everybody being here, and I appreciate everyone's feedback. And I appreciate, and I ask that everyone can take a step back and take a breath and recognize that we're just trying to do the right thing for you, for everyone, everyone that we are elected to serve. That's all I'm asking. Now, on that note, I appreciate that the Planning Commission has taken on this task. And I appreciate that we are forming a task force and we're going to, and council made it very clear early on that we were gonna have a consultant because it is time to bring an outside unbiased person or persons into the room to help us figure this out. Because there's too many, too many agendas. We all can accept that. We all have an agenda. So let's bring someone from the outside who has absolutely no skin in this game in our town, but can look at the big picture. And that's what we need. So I want our, our task force to be able to do that. I feel confident that the folks who are gonna serve us in that capacity will do a good job. And I fully believe that the consultants that we bring in will be the utmost professionals. So I want them to be able to do their job. And that's why I support Lauren with what she suggested. And I think you can all see that that's where we're going. We don't want to ruin anybody's business. We don't want to ruin anybody's lives. We're just trying to arrive at the decision that's gonna work for everybody. Now, on transparency, all I will say, I will, I listened in on Thursday on the entire Planning Commission meeting, and this came up. The other thing that we were elected to do was to have the courage to not place blame on anybody and take responsibility. And this council has been the most transparent. Holly Leo and I walked into our very first meeting and set up a, a phone right there on a tripod and started broadcasting these meetings so that they would be transparent. So I get a little prickly when people start talking about us not being transparent. We have the courage to admit that this was a quick decision and we want to pull it back. We have the courage to not place the blame on anybody else but ourselves. So this is on us. We apologize if it made folks uncomfortable. Please step back and give us a break. Let our task force do its job. Let the consultants do its job. So that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Garnet. Ryan, anything you'd like to share from a staff perspective before I sort of make a few comments?
Or should I get, begin, Mr. Mayor? I mean, I'll just echo Garnett's comments. We knew short-term rentals is gonna be a touchy subject. This is a little bit of deja vu for me because I've worked on short-term regulations in my past career in Door County, Wisconsin. Similar format, similar discussions. Everyone had very, really valid points. So I think if everyone stays cool, calm, and collected and makes their points in, in, in a constructive way, that you'll get through this, and perhaps you'll have some new regulations at the, the end of the summer going into fall. But you're gonna be data-driven. You're gonna have professional consultants that have worked on this issue around the state and the Midwest, and frankly, all over the world. This is not a unique issue. It is a little more acute in Sagatuck. But I, I have full faith and confidence in that this council will be able to get through this discussion.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Before we talk about the path forward, I guess it's my turn to say a few things. You know, I've been on both sides of this issue. There are realtors in town that I depended on to rent out my house in Holland when I was living overseas with my family because I wanted to be able to come back to America. I wanted to have a home in America. I live now up in the hill, and I'm friends with Rocky and Jen, you know, my neighbors who live in Chicago but have owned a short-term rental. So I, I get it. I see both sides of it. I, you know, I'm also sympathetic to folks that feel like, you know, you know, when, when there is noise, they can't get to sleep and they can't get somebody to address it. You know, that happens. It's unfortunate. And I, I think what I would go back to is, is let's remember, you know, we were elected to, to serve the voters. And actually, I, I, I looked back at the League of Women Voters Forum on October eighth. It's, it's on YouTube. You can watch it. All of you around this table were there at that meeting. Some of you weren't up for reelection, but you were all there. We were all at this, we were all at the League of Women Voters Forum. When people asked me what the top three issues I had were, the first thing I said was, you know, we need to tackle the short-term rental issue. It's the elephant in the room. We need to tackle it. There are so many issues around it, parking noise. You know, it is a resource management issue in this community. You know, it used to be lumber. You know, it used to be fishing baskets, fruit. This is a, the housing stock is a valuable resource. We all realize that. But I believe it does need management. And when I campaigned for reelection last year, the voters that I spoke to told me it was important to them that we start talking about this issue. And, you know, many people warned me that this, you know, this was the elephant in the room. You know, don't pull this scab off. Don't, don't force this uncomfortable conversation, you know, at the dinner table. But I got elected to, to ask questions and ask hard questions. So I'm, I've got a thick skin and I'm not shy about asking it. I, I certainly hope we, none of us have made anyone uncomfortable, but when I have professional city staff and, and and our planning commission say, you know, we, we've seen other communities do this, you know, we should at least take a look at it and talk about it. I believe that's what we've done. I, I appreciate you all being here. I appreciate the attention that this got, that this is received. The intent is not to, you know, put fear into the hearts of anybody. It's to have the discussion. And I think we're doing that. And I think that kind of takes us to to our path forward. And I'm also intrigued by Lauren's, Lauren's thought. I think it's a good one. Clearly, there's not consensus among the council on this. Clearly, there's not consensus in the community. So I think, you know, this is something that we don't have to take up. We can simply hold it for another time. We, you know, we don't need to put it on the agenda. But I will tell you all, though, I mean, just like we've done in the past, you know, please subscribe to our email blasts. Please pay attention, not pay attention, that's the wrong word. But please do watch, you know, our meeting packets. We, you know, we are not going to do what we've seen up to the north of us where suddenly the council's gonna start a meeting and we're gonna say, oh, yeah, let's make an agenda change. Let's do this. Oh, let's change the rules of order. Let's quickly vote on something. You know, that's not what we've done. We set a policy decision for a viewpoint from, from our planning commission to take a look at something and to give us the and to give us their thoughts on it. And, you know, once again, we are now at a deliberative meeting. I'm thrilled you're all here because we never get anybody at workshops, so I'm thrilled you're all here for this. So, you know, we are starting the discussion and we are raising an issue, which I think is valuable. So with that, I think where we are is there's clearly no consensus. There's no point in voting on this at all. So I, I would direct the manager, unless there's a disagreement among this, this group. You know, this, this will, we don't even need to table it because it's not up for a vote. We will just hold this and see where we are with, with the planning consultant. And I'll entertain reaction from the council on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just did want to clarify, I was one of the yes votes at the planning commission on Thursday evening to bring this to council. Two reasons for that, one is I want to hear what council was thinking about this topic. And number two is I, my opinion on this has evolved. And a lot of people that spoke Thursday night and have spoken today have kind of continued to inform my opinion about this. I can see both sides of the argument. So I just want folks to know that I remain open minded about what's best for the community. And that's what I try to make the decision, sometimes it's, it's right, sometimes it's wrong and I'll admit if I'm wrong. But, you know, Thursday night was really interesting. That's really, really first got the first kind of feeling of where the community was on this and there's not a right answer. And I, I appreciate council member Lewis's comments, they were spot on. Everybody's comments have been spot on today. Difficult topic, I'm glad that we are addressing this. This community has gone through difficult topics before. This is not the first time we've dealt with a full room with TV, with no TV cameras here today. But the city has been through this before with other topics. And so I encourage everybody to continue to remain involved. And I've told Chairman Vance, we've had a lot of discussions about this and, and we'll be talking about the actual task force in a few minutes. Is that the people that are not being selected, I would absolutely encourage them to remain engaged because we need to hear from everybody. And it's just, this is so incredibly important to me personally to hear what folks think. And really what I want to see the task force do, and I think it's going to accomplish is, what do we want, where do we want to be in five, 10, 15 years? What do we want this to look like? I don't know, I have my opinion about it, but there's others out there that have different opinions and I want to hear those. So again, just please, please, please continue to be engaged on this. I know we can't have all these people at every meeting, but we could. I would welcome that because I just love to see some faces out there that I know and some smiles. And this is, you know, I'm here, I live here just like you do and I want the best for everybody.
Thank you for that comment, Russ. And you just reminded me of something, you know, we're already making progress because, believe it or not, there is common ground here. I don't think there was a single person here that didn't say they didn't love this community. You know, everybody here said that they love this community, they cherish it, they want it to prosper and they want it to continue to be what has brought us all here in the first place. Some of us have been here for a long time, some of us are relatively new. But the new folks came here because they want to see it stay the same, I think. I don't, you know, so I think this is a good start. I'll, you know, if, if I don't hear any other objections from the council, we'll, we'll just, we'll park, we'll park this one. Oh, go ahead, Ellen.
I wanted to understand, I still haven't had an answer on where we are as far as hiring a professional planning consultant.
Okay, Ryan, can you address that?
Yeah, so we had sent out a request for professional services to a few different firms. The deadline that we were looking at, hopefully here back, was on Monday at five. Reached out to one firm that we hadn't heard back from. They just don't have the capacity of staff right now. They're also assisting some other local communities and it's concerns about maybe potential conflicts and that sort of thing. Another firm we've reached out to a few different times and so far haven't received the response. And then we did receive a response from a planning firm named McKenna, a very large firm in the state. Been around since the late seventies. Right now, they're working on over, you know, eighty-five projects for various communities throughout the state. They have offices on the east side of the state as well as Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids. So they put together a very comprehensive proposal based on the, your resolution that you passed. Staff's still kind of looking through that and looking through the details and the cost as well as a key component, certainly. But so, yes, we have a proposal. Our plan is to, at your next workshop meeting, bring forth a recommendation on, on a firm for you to consider.
Right, are you saying you only had one firm? Because two people, two firms didn't get back to you, you're only looking at one firm?
There's one that's responded at this point.
Just one.
Correct.
Okay, now that we have the moratorium possibly, we don't have that deadline of the moratorium possibly. Is it worth opening up so we can see if more firms could come to us if that, you know, so we have a few choices?
Certainly, whatever the council desires.
I think I'd like to also have a few choices as well.
Is the moratorium the reason that the firms aren't getting back to us?
Though whether it was a Friday deadline is what he said.
This was, yeah, the request for professional services was sent before any the moratorium discussion. It was, the information provided was solely based on the, the resolution that you passed establishing a task force and providing information on that. So, yeah.
You're going to bring something to us next workshop?
That's, that's our, our hope. Now, it may take more time than that to get more proposals. So, I mean, if the desire from council is that we want more than one proposal to consider, then that's, that may take some time.
Would it make any sense to have a personal call from the mayor or perhaps the manager to encourage them to respond?
Yeah, I've reached out and our manager has reached out to one of the firms as well today, so.
I'd be happy to call and say, hey.
Yeah, me too.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Can we maybe broaden our, our approach? Because this is an economic development issue for our town, since this is our one and only industry. Perhaps we could engage with a firm that specializes in economic development? Is that an approach maybe we could take?
That is not what's agreed upon by council.
That's true.
Well, let me.
I'm just trying to.
It's a fair point, I mean, you know.
The options, so can I?
Go ahead, Garnet.
So just to reassure everybody, this type, that kind of happens quite a bit. Whether it's on my background in academe, as much as we'd like everybody to respond, there are various issues that affect a businesses or a consultant's ability to do that. I am not concerned. What I want is that even if it's just one, that they are qualified and a firm that has been used by others and highly regarded. I would like to see the proposal. This is very typical, sometimes you just get one. And that's just based on timing, staffing, everything. I'm, I'm not too worried that we don't have ten people. I'd rather have one good quality one than ten kind of mediocre ones.
Yeah, I think you're.
Even three.
Exactly right.
Of one.
Yeah.
When we, we requested kind of their workload capacity as well because we understood that two meetings a month for two hours, just meeting time alone and traveling for those meetings, plus all the work that's involved outside of those meetings, you know, it's, it's going to take some staff time. McKenna has assisted the city of Holland recently on some development ordinances as well as some fair housing work. They assisted Venvo with their master plan update recently. So they've done local work certainly as well.
Familiar with the area, got it.
Just not familiar with the firm, so I didn't, I haven't seen that, so I was just curious.
Yeah, sitting here, I'm not.
But it, it sounds like we've got two weeks to hopefully hear back from some other entities. And one has to wonder if it's because they're up to their eyeballs in short term rental consulting work.
Maybe two or three, I mean, certainly not ten, but.
Why don't we see, once again, we're not making a decision here. Why don't we, why don't we just see where we are in two weeks? I mean, I think everyone's made themselves clear on how they feel about having this work at a minimum, you know, having some consultant to assist us, that we've agreed on that already, so.
Yeah, we're conducting that, that work and that evaluation, it's just not, yeah.
Other, any other thoughts?
Thanks, thanks to both, thanks to the staff. I know this has taken a lot of time and I'm always appreciative of the time and energy and the effort that you all put forward to keep us on track.
As we go forward and, and, and we're working on this, we're hearing a lot of folks talk about, you know, enforcing ordinances. Have you talked with our police department or have some kind of idea of how we can be better about doing that? Because that's something we can do right now. Even while the, the, this report is working with SCR, are you working on some kind of plan of action or some kind of something with our police department to maybe help to be better about enforcing noise, trash in traffic?
So, yeah, Ryan and I actually this afternoon met over lunch and had discussed some, some ideas for that, that very topic. Yep.
Great, that's good to hear.
All right. All right. So I think, I think, you know, we've parked, we've parked basically six A or, you know, we're going to give Ryan a couple more weeks to hopefully get some, some more interest in, in some consulting help on this. And if there's no, you know, no objections, if you will, I'd like to go to the next M word in our agenda. And that is six B waterfront moratorium, that's on page eight. Ryan, you're still on the hot seat, unfortunately.
Been sat in a while.
Stay and listen, and do you want a chair?
Yeah, right, I might as well sit in the middle and.
Yeah. Have a drink while people file out, yeah.
All right, well, equally as important, I think.
On the table, yes.
So, but important, another important item to discuss here. So certainly, this community, you know, the waterfront is very important to this community. And so, you know, the city council established a long term vision for commercial and residential waterfront development as a desirable priority in your strategic planning session recently. Planning commission was totally in sync with you in that back in October, they also identified kind of the existing waterfront development patterns as concerning. They wanted to kind of look at some updates to zoning ordinance in twenty twenty-three as a priority. So we, in this case, you know, we do have an in-house, well, not in-house, but we do have a planning consultant that we work with on a regular basis. Kind of took that, that information to him and kind of discussed, hey, you know, we certainly have some properties that could potentially be developed here in the near future. Community is really concerned about making sure that we get waterfront development correct and wanted to make sure that current ordinances, you know, align with, you know, the master plan and, and where we're going. So before you this evening, for your consideration, once again, is a proposed police power ordinance. In this case, it would enact a temporary moratorium on permitting, approval and consideration of new building construction, exist, existing building expansions and site development, which would be parking and site improvements in all waterfront, essentially commercial districts. So that'd be Water Street North, Water Street South, Water Street Commercial, then the Resort Zoning District. So you're essentially talking from Coffin Park, we're on the waterfront up to Willow Park and then directly across the river in the resort district. Similar to the, the other moratorium that you discussed, and here's a kind of a map to kind of show you where that lighter blue Water Street South goes and then up to the odd colored blue, that's Water Street North. And then that yellow across the river is the resort districts. That's, that would be the area that would be impacted. This would be, this is proposed to be a six month moratorium. So the police powers ordinance, so once again, city council has the authority to pass that. Planning commission doesn't, but the planning commission was asked for their feedback and did make a recommendation that the city council adopt a temporary waterfront commercial development and construction moratorium. Moratoriums put into place, staff intends to work in partnership with our planning consultant, David Drousek, to do a few things. We hope to review the existing ordinance, look at what, what it allows, will implement your master plan, will it result in desirable waterfront development that this community is looking for? We're going to review best practices and examples of waterfront commercial development guidelines and requirements. The intent is to do some community engagement and surveys with kind of waterfront focused questions. I'm a big visual person, so when I can see, you know, visual preferences, we can do some surveying, community engagement around that. With that, we'll prepare some zoning recommendations and potentially overlay districts and then conduct public hearing and an approval process. And all of that work would be directly with the planning commission and it wouldn't be a separate task force or work group. All those meetings would be certainly open to the public, all those packets would be pushed out and available so folks could kind of watch that work as it goes. So with that, happy to answer any questions and look forward to your discussion on this.
Open to the council, any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, just from the planning commission discussion Thursday night, this one kind of just went under the radar with the short term rental moratorium. I fully expected a little bit more, more discussion around this. But having said that, the planning commission itself has identified this as being an area of focus because we have our tri-community master plan, which is coming up for renewal and that waterfront is a key part of that tri-community master plan. And for those of you that are familiar with the community in terms of some of the business owners, there's been some changes and properties and changing hands. And I anticipate there's probably going to be some more properties changing hands on the waterfront. And the concern there is to make sure that the zoning code reflects what the community expects from the waterfront. And the, one of the key aspects of it is continued views out to the waterscape. The boardwalk, I'll echo Mark Becken because this has come up in many, many years, is that the boardwalk from Coffin Park all the way down to Wicks Park is pulling. And we have agreements with the new group that owns the Butler and others to allow access to that waterfront. And that's a key part of our zoning as well. So that's going to be part of the discussion, making sure that there's public access to the waterfront. And so the planning commission appreciates the presumed support on this. We look forward to the work to work with David Drousek and with Ryan to take a look at the zoning ordinance, make sure that it reflects what the community is looking for.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ellen.
So this goes to planning and to staffing. So the reason that you want the moratorium is to give planning the time and space that they need to understand what the issues are?
Yes, yeah.
And with the houseboat litigation, the reason that we had the moratorium was to give people time and space to figure out what the issues are? I would submit that we're backing off from the short term rental moratorium because it's making people uncomfortable. And I think that that's a shame, that's all I have to say about that.
Thanks, any other council members?
I had just a couple of questions. It's a six month moratorium.
Correct.
So depending on when we would, when or if we would enact it, it would be six months from when we enact it.
Correct.
I understand the expansions and any site development. What if there's business owners along the waterfront that just want to repair some of their existing? If it doesn't expand their, their business in any way, but they need to make repairs and do those types of things, would that affect them?
Right, so like, you know, the way it's written up, you know, interior outfits and work that needs to occur and that kind of repair work is not the intent behind.
The exterior, though, if they had exterior repairs.
Well, I guess it would depend on what the repairs are and to what extent. If there's going to be any expansion involved, then certainly they would, you know, the business would be subject to the moratorium. But there were city attorney here tonight too that could advise if he has a different opinion than, than that. But I think simple siding or something like that wouldn't be the intent of this.
Okay.
So, yeah, because, right.
I'm seeing some repair work done at some businesses on Water Street right now. So I was wondering the same thing. Thanks for asking that, Lauren.
Good question.
There is a, some language in there in, in the same line of, you know, concern that we have, I have, we don't have any current applications for, you know, commercial development right now and, and the waterfront. I don't know how far along somebody may or may not be in plan. So there is kind of some language that says if somebody believes that they have a hardship here with a moratorium being the place that they would have an option to apply to you as a city council to be exempt from the moratorium, but that would be a decision that would be yours. You don't have to have that language in here, you can choose to remove that. But that was something that we thought we should bring forward for you to, to consider as maybe an extra option and layer to, for folks that may believe they have a hardship.
So currently you have no applications right now in this area for, for anything?
Not for commercial.
So that would make such a big economic, economic impact if we were to pass this moratorium, right?
I don't have any, have no current applications, zoning applications for this, these particular zoning districts, right?
So, if I may, so in an attempt to be consistent, I think it would, I, I'm actually going to be a little flippant. We just decided not to enact a moratorium on short term rentals. And are, are basically saying, task force, do your job and consultant, do your job. My, sorry, I just think it's kind of funny. I think we should basically let Bobby and the planning commission move forward with the master plan. Lots of other communities are hiring outside individuals to help with that master plan process for exactly the same reasons that they're doing so with short term rentals. I would personally rather see us go that direction than decide to enact a moratorium here when we just decided not to, on the other hand. So I would support a moratorium at this point in time.
I think we just got to get more people yelling about it.
Sorry. This is kind of fun.
Thank you. I, I, I would just, I forgot to add or forgot to thank Ryan, Ryan, city staff, as well as the planning commission for all the work on these discussions as well as putting this in front of the planning commission first. And that's something that hasn't been mentioned. It's been talked about informally, but and Ryan talked about it at the meeting on Thursday night is that in many situations, the city council or commission, wherever you are, takes the police power first and doesn't ask questions. In this case, it was brought to the planning commission for discussion with the planning commissioners. And I personally appreciate that. I know other planning commissioners appreciate that as well. I think it's a good example to set. And we took the first round of public information, which was, which was informational and we got more today. So, and that's, that's all good. So again, thank you for the effort to do that.
Thoughts?
I would agree with what Garnett just said. I think I would like to see some consistency and I don't really see a reason why the planning commission with a firm can't do this work with the master plan coming up. I, again, I do thank the planning commission because man, didn't they do some difficult work to get us here. But I am just sensitive to having moratoriums right now. Just with legal fees and I like, I do believe that moratoriums create winners and losers, and I think it increases our chances of having litigation costs. And I would prefer not see us do this.
I mean, I see the point that this one is closer to, you know, active management of something that the public all depends on for the character of the community. I, I do think it is a bit of a different animal than personal property rights. You know, this, this, the boardwalk is, you know, it's been said many times, once again, go back to, you know, the campaign, you know, there were a number of candidates that were very passionate about campaigning, about protecting the waterfront and people's access to it. So I, I'm not sure it's an apples to apples in that regard. But once again, I think you know where I come. I like to try to find consensus among the council as best as possible. And I'm just trying to see where we are. You know, I mean, is am I sensing a huge desire to push this forward and to, and to put it to a vote or?
Are, are we in any kind of threat of losing some, is, is, as we have, as you talked about the, the dock that we have that goes from Butler all the way to the park? Is there any kind of threat with how ordinances are now that, that we could lose some of that?
Yeah, please, Ryan.
Mr. Muncie, thanks for the question. Yeah. So we have to be really careful. As you know, the, the Butler was recently purchased by the Redwater Group. They purchased, they own the parking lot as well. I imagine they spend quite, quite a large sum of money. And so this doesn't have necessarily do with the boardwalk, but just kind of an example of what could happen.
Right.
I don't think for that investment, the highest and best use is going to be a parking lot. You know, they probably want to put something else in there. And without any parking requirements, onsite parking requirements, which you do not have now, that would then displace everyone that would use that facility. Not only do you worry about viewscapes, but it's on the waterfront. You got impermeable, impermeable surface, environmental concerns, some other things that probably aren't addressed very well in the current ordinances. Your question about the boardwalk, we do have to be very cautious and I'll talk about this in a little bit with our dock licenses. We do have to be very careful and, and we are with our language in regards to reserving our right to the boardwalk. And we are having those discussions with the Redwater Group, something that we're very sensitive to. Again, I will touch on that in a little bit, but essentially we are going way back in time to look at, you know, who originally built the boardwalk. I mean, we're doing our due diligence and we're, yeah, we, we're creating a timeline so that we understand as a city what we have rights to and what we may not and what we need to focus on. So the boardwalk is a concern that we maintain ownership. That's why we're being so cautious with our, our talks with the Redwater Group and specifically. Did that answer your question at all?
I guess. I guess what I'm saying is, you know, is this moratorium, is it important to, to, would it be, would it be important one way or the other if it's passed or not? With the desire to protect our boardwalk, to, to keep the boardwalk that we currently have. I mean, would it make a difference?
The boardwalk specifically, I, I can't say, maybe Jake would have some comments on this. I've been working more closely with Chris on this, on this one. I, I can't say they're directly tied to one another, but it certainly could come into play. Yes.
Okay.
So my only concern, if, you know, I was sitting on council would be that application could come in at any point in time. And you could have a very large structure put on your waterfront, maybe with some, some ordinances or regulations that you, you don't like.
So me following up on that though, we've all been involved long enough to know that that takes more than six months to happen.
And as far as the application, so then, right? So they can submit an application at any time. And then as far as like the review takes longer.
Review zoning approval committee.
Yep. And I think the story will be that, I'm not an attorney, maybe Jake can speak to this, but you, you don't have to, you don't have to process the application after you receive it, but I think you do open yourself up to a lot more litigation. If you were to not approve the project when they applied under the, under the understanding that the current ordinances are in place, current zoning laws are in place.
Yeah. And, and just kind of to dovetail off of that, I mean, there, the council would have the ability if there's an application submitted to like kind of impose an emergency moratorium following that to, to kind of target something, but that also does, I mean, that, that goes from expressing this is a very generalized concern versus, I mean, basically targeting a single application, which that might still be defensible, but that's more of an uphill battle.
I hope I can just speak freely on this. I know some of our zoning does not include parking, you know, allowing for enough parking spaces. So if somebody were to build a three-story condo unit for vacation rentals, like parking is not required. So I'm just saying, if they're going to develop on our waterfront, we have to be careful because this is not in our zoning right now.
I agree.
And I just think that if we need a pause to start looking at that zoning and making sure that we make some corrections that we might need. I just, I feel differently about this moratorium than I do with the short-term rentals.
I know, I know.
I do too.
I, I think, I think, you know, optics are one thing, but the reality of the situation we're dealing with could be very different. For example, I mean, we're, we can look out the window and look at what was approved. And once again, no disrespect to anybody, but I think I, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, and there's folks here from plan that can tell me, our, our, our hands were kind of tied because it met all the requirements of our planning and zoning. Because we didn't have a requirement to find parking for 300 new customers or whatever the number was. Somebody can remind me of
150.
150 new customers. We didn't have extra seats. So we didn't have a requirement for that. So conceivably to Ryan's point, if something came to us and it met all the current regs, you know, regardless of how individuals felt about the aesthetics or, you know, the master plan, it would have to go through. It would likely go through. Go ahead. So I'm going to step back for a second because I've been involved with council long enough and with planning commission long enough that really the bigger issue is the fact that we have how many zone districts downtown? And that that's the real issue, right? So shouldn't we be dealing with the real issue, which is taking a look at all these unnecessary different zone districts and really trying to narrow it down to one to two to three to, you know, we have commercial, we have this, that, we have, but we've talked about this. We have way too many. And so isn't that a real issue that what should be dealt with, that we should jump in and start to review and revise our zoned areas? That is a question. I mean, what comes first, the cart or the horse? And so it's, it's kind of, we've been put, this is another one. We're kind of pushing it off and pushing off and pushing off. But if we're going to be courageous, let's just tackle this one too.
Yeah. The, the planning commission has raised that as well as something that needs to be looked at and how we can maybe consolidate some of these separate zoning districts. That, you know, that's going to very doable. You know, if we're looking at just the water free, Water Street South, commercial Water Street North, I mean, potentially, maybe we end up with one complete waterfront district at the end of this. That's, that's a possibility. The moratorium would, would impact just those districts and the resort district. But I think your, your point to, you know, consolidation to the extent possible. I think, you know, this is something that I've discussed with Ryan a few times that we've identified a number of things as we've been working through the zoning ordinance that needs some updates. And typically, if we're going to consolidate some zoning districts, it's probably done as an overall update to the zoning ordinance. So we would be looking at entire zoning ordinance, looking to clean a lot of things up that we identify on a daily basis. And consolidation of districts to the extent that we can, you know, and we're not going to create a bunch of non-conformant, non-conformity issues with setbacks and heights and uses and.
And forgive me, is that a part of this suggested moratorium that's in front of us, that that would be a part of that? If we put a, if we voted for a moratorium for waterfront development, that we would take a broader look at the zone districts and make the revisions that need to occur.
So the moratorium is specific to Water Street South, Water Street North, Water Street Commercial. So that's, that's what we'd be focused on. Certainly we could take a look at, okay, if there are, one, I guess the first question is, is there a way to maybe combine those because they're along the waterfront? Or maybe some of those should be combined with, you know, districts across the street. I don't see why we couldn't have a moratorium in place as far as development goes along the actual waterfront districts, while also looking at potential opportunities to combine some districts during that, that work. I think that's, that's
question, what, you know, what comes first? What makes sense to come first?
What makes sense to come? Well, well, it's going to be an undertaking. I think that's kind of why we're bringing in, you know, just to you to consider in that. Like we've discussed, whatever comes to you today, based on today's current zoning standards, we're going to evaluate it based on that. I don't know how, you know, we're anticipating over the next six months, we can work on waterfront development related ordinance updates. I, I don't know how much, you know, combining districts, how much time that would take as far as, you know, extending that six month out.
Yeah. I guess I'd like us to take a holistic approach rather than piecemeal. That's, that's where I'm coming to, you know, really going to go about doing this. It's not that I don't support them bringing, slowing it down, but rather than taking it piece by piece, why don't we just tackle the whole thing? And get it done because we've been talking about it for a long time.
What, what does that look like, Gar?
Well, just basically this is the main issue that's been on the table for years is that we have way too many zone districts for our little old town. Way too many. And, and that's primarily because of the way that the city grew, right? I mean, I remember when I first moved here, the retro bus wasn't even there. So that whole area changed. And so it, doesn't it make more sense to have one zone district for literally that whole commercial? Rather than, you know, three or four or five. I don't even know. I can't count right now. But I mean, this, yeah, I, you know, why, why take on part of the problem instead of the whole problem? Why not address the whole problem? Get it revised and updated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. I disagree with council member Louis. I think these are two different issues. I think the issue of the waterfront moratorium is addressed in the resolution and the planning commission reviewed that and recommended that that be passed by city council. I view the issue of too many districts that has been discussed by planning commission. I do agree with that. There are too many districts and that needs to be looked at, whether it's part of the tri-community plan or part of a zoning review ordinance. A review of the zoning ordinance that should be looked at, but I, I divorce the two things because we could very well, during this discussion during the moratorium, when the, when, when the zones are, are looked at, it could very well come out and say, these really ought to just be one district. That could very well be something discussed. But the overall consolidation or change to all the zoning districts, I think should be a separate discussion from the moratorium. I'm in favor of the moratorium.
Mr. Mayor.
Go, go ahead.
So I, I believe that there should be a moratorium on the waterfront. I mainly wanted to point out that it was very inconsistent to have it for this, have it for the houseboats and deny it for the short-term rentals. I did take issue with the short-term rentals that it was essentially me backdated to March 9th. And I thought the planning actually got it right to move it to the 27th when we would have initially voted on it. I'm willing to have some flexibility and take that out with what our, the, the firm that we've agreed that we need to hire, what their recommendation is. I understand that. I think at this point in the night, you're counting votes and I will vote for the moratorium, but I would have also done the same thing for the short-term rentals because I believe in having some consistency. And I think that to do less is just disingenuous. So if you're counting votes, I'm a yes.
All right. Any other thoughts on this?
I agree with, with Russ as well. I do think with all due respect, Garnett Lewis, I do, I do think that they are two different issues. One of them is a big economic impact versus a development with, with some businesses on Water Street. We don't currently have any applications right now. And I think the water view is important to all of us and, and to, and to tourism as well. I think that I, I'm in support of the moratorium. In this case, and I will vote yes on it. I just don't see the economic impact as severe as the other moratorium. So.
Okay. Any, any other thoughts on this? Based on the discussion, which I think was, was good. You know, I, I would like to see this on the agenda for a vote. I think this one needs to go up or down because I personally, I know the optics look, look bad. You know, one moratorium, yes, the other moratorium, no. Or are being parked, if you will. But you know, this one is something that is more about a public space. You know, it's not about people's property rights per se, you know, or, you know, I think this one is, is worth making sure, you know, we deal with it. You know, we did deal with the issue that's actually going to be in court tomorrow. So we did do it in that case. The other one that we dealt with earlier, the other M word, I, I think we all can agree is significantly more complicated, has significantly higher impact on individuals as opposed to larger entities. And I think it's fair to say, you know, you know, we, you know, you know, we had no choice but to do something where we, where we really didn't match, you know, you know, one of our big management issues, which is managing parking in the summer. So we, you know, we, we were forced basically because of our rules to put in a place that didn't come with the, with the requisite parking, you know? So I, I think we do need to give the planning commission some time to look at this. And so, you know, I, I, I think this one should, should go. And that's, that's where I'm on, on, on that in terms of setting the agenda for, for next Monday. And there's plenty of time. I mean, once again, there's plenty of time to discuss it. Think about it. I'm sure staff would be happy to continue to answer questions up until the vote and but I, I think this one should move forward. That's kind of where I am on this one.
To be voted on on Monday.
Yes. Yes. I think so. Okay. Moving on. Ryan, I think you might get a break now.
Or not.
Just kidding.
Would you like a drink or something stronger?
I want to know.
Okay. It's item six C E O A D A letter to the business owner on page 15.
No, I mean, good discussions tonight on some challenging issues, but that's why you're here, right? So as policymakers and that's why we're here as staff to bring forward options for you to consider. So so this, bringing this to you this evening, it's kind of an interesting issue that has been brought forth by the COVID-19 pandemic in a way. So pre-pandemic, city of Sagatuck had regulations on the books and the zoning that said that if you want to expand your business to have outdoor seating on, you know, in the right of way, which really was intended for sidewalks was the intent of it at the time. That required a special land use permit and approval of a site plan by the planning commission. And then COVID shocked us all and you and many other communities worked diligently and worked quickly to be flexible with businesses to allow them to, you know, expand outdoors onto sidewalks and into parking spaces and streets to, you know, continue that, this, you know, tourism economy that, that Sagatuck is relying upon. And so through that process, you kind of had pop-up patios and then as the emergencies kind of were going away, but yet there was still a lot of unknowns even early last year, if you recall, it seems like a long time ago that nobody knew what was going to happen with the spread of the virus and, and the, the viral spread at that time was still quite high. And so then you established. that nobody knew what was going to happen with the spread of the virus and, and the, the viral spread at that time was still quite high. And so then you established um, uh, an ordinance and some policy, uh, that really gave staff a lot of latitude to uh, basically approve um, expanded outdoor dining areas um, and parking spaces outside. And so what we ended up with essentially now is kind of this, this hybrid of approvals that have occurred over time. So we have some situations where a business had maybe approval to have, uh, you know, sidewalk um, seating. The pandemic hit, and then they were expanding their sidewalk seating, and then maybe they were also expanding into the street. So maybe they had partial zoning approval years ago, and then they had kind of non-zoning approval now, but had kind of a license to operate temporarily. Um, and then we have others who are on your sidewalks and also want to be in your streets again on a temporary basis, but have never received any zoning approval. And so um, we know there's a lot of businesses that are, are in that, that type of a situation. And so um, staff's kind of discussed all those scenarios. And we also kind of have discussed that, you know, a lot of communities are trying to kind of figure out, okay, how do we return back to a more normal and bring folks into compliance, but also not um, burden our businesses as we're, you know, uh, trying to do that. And so what we're bringing to you tonight is one to make sure that this is brought to your attention, but also to seek your feedback and really your endorsement. Um, really a policy decision to allow us staff to have some continued prosecutorial discretion and how we would handle these going forward. And so what our intent is uh, would be to kind of continue that, that flexibility and staff discretion for temporary expanded outdoor dining during twenty twenty-three. So spring, summer, fall. Um, we would take those expanded outdoor dining applications like we did for the parking spaces last year, evaluate them if they meet the requirements. It would be approved and receive a license just for the season. Um, with uh, sidewalk seating, we would look at revocable license agreements is how they were handled in the past on a temporary basis, um, also on a permanent basis, but I won't get too into the weeds. Um, we'd like to work with legal counsel. I've talked this over with um, Chris Patterson quite a bit over the summer to make sure that, that our regulations, our zoning and code requirements really are aligned um, and consistent. Um, we would, we want to provide the attached letter that's in your packet to uh, restaurants to kind of let them know, hey, we're going to continue as is right now with kind of these hybrid of approval approach. But as of November first, and working through the winter, we want to work to bring you into compliance with our crony, current zoning code requirements that we have um, in place. So that way everybody's on the same page. And then our intent, um, you know, late fall, early winter would be to kind of set up some sort of an open house where we invite businesses to come in. Then I kind of help guide them through what that uh, application process looks like to bring them into compliance with the zoning, if they want to continue to have expanded outdoor dining. Some of them may choose at that point, and it's not something what they want to do. But if they do want to, we'll help provide the resources and uh, that they need to uh, to get them through that process. So look, look for your feedback and uh, whether or not you're open to this approach. The other option is uh, you tell us, hey, go out and enforce what you have on the books and we'll do that too. But that's why we're bringing it to you.
Great.
I'm happy to go ahead. I'm just, I appreciate that you're just trying to clean things up. Um, you know, once you got into it, I'm sure you were like, okay, there's a little bit of this and there's a little bit of that. And I just respect that you're just trying to clean it up and make everybody on the same page. Um, you know, going forward, I think uh, this is my opinion, but I also have heard this in the community. We've enjoyed the expanded outdoor dining. Um, as we know, there's sometimes two-hour waits in the summertime, even with the expanded outdoor dining to be able to, you know, go to a restaurant in town. Um, the amount of people in town, it's needed. Um, it's needed to have that um, that outdoor space still available for people, and it created a really nice experience. And um, so I hope that goes forward. And if that just means that we just have it, everybody is on the same page, um, and it makes your job easier, um, I'm absolutely all for it.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You go ahead, Helen.
Um, so I agree, and I think that it's, it's really nice for our business owners to be able to have that flexibility. And I think that um, I personally would be in favor of, you know, maybe losing a parking space in order to afford a, a business eight more tables in the summertime. I think that we actually uh, benefit from that, and they do as well. Um, I just want to make sure that they would be able, so if you would enforce this as of November, you think that you'd be able to get through all of the applications and that by the time that they would be wanting to open up, say, in April or May, are we confident that we could get through all of the?
More confident that we can do it then versus doing it now.
Yeah, that's exactly it. I mean, and then that's why I appreciate the timing of it is that if it's going to be in November, then, because I, I really think that we owe it to our business community to, to have them be able to have the time to come forward. And I think that is a benefit. I think that it benefits, I mean, it benefits everybody except for that one person who doesn't get to park there, right? But uh, you know, twenty people get to dine three times, then that uh, that makes more sense to me. And I think that it uh, it's, it benefits. And, and I think, I mean, we live in Michigan. We're happy to eat in a parking lot or a tree.
I hear you.
Have at it. But I just want to make sure that there'd be enough time for everybody to get to it and, and that affords the staff with the amount of time that they need and the business owners, the amount of time that they need to apply, and it's open and, and transparent, and we can get to it uh, in that, in that way.
If, if the business orders heed the advice to, to get those applications, and it's going to be a workload for our planning commission because they're going to have to look at the, each of these and, and evaluate them like they normally do for site plans and public health and safety.
Putting it off and this and that. And then you're going to be a hardship on the businesses if they're not able to be out there because they haven't gotten to it. So.
No, I hear you. Yeah.
That's all. That was my only concern.
Thanks, Helen. Thank you, Helen. Uh, others?
Um, I would say I uh, concur with what Lauren said. I mean, when Garn and I were on council during the pandemic, we, I mean, we were just scrambling to try to support businesses in any way that we could. And what we kept saying over and over again is if we need to go back and make some changes, we will. Um, so I, you know, appreciate the work that's been done here. You know, everyone really has enjoyed these spaces. Um, but I also want to allow the planning commission, um, you know, the ability to um, you know, make sure that things are consistent and safe and that, you know, we sort of continue to make things professional, raise the bar. Um, but I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I love seeing uh, an open house because again, I think that's, that is new. And I love the idea that we're having that, that sort of proactive outreach and uh, you know, sort of building our team as a community. So was glad to see that.
Other, go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, I would just say that I'm in, I'm in full support of this approach. I think it's thoughtful. I think it's respectful of the situation the city has been in and like many other communities um, that have discovered the joys of expanded outdoor dining. And I think it's something that I personally feel should continue, but from a planning stand, planning standpoint, putting on my hat, the zoning code doesn't really reflect where we are in reality. So we need to make that adjustment. And I, I, I don't see any opposition to moving forward to codifying this in a more, you know, manageable manner, I guess is probably the best way to put it. So I'm in support of this approach.
Uh, anyone else?
I just have a few thoughts um, and suggestions as a business owner who is above her eyebrows during the summer. Um, I, I remember that we got the email addresses for all the businesses, didn't we? So I would, the, the communication with folks will be like early and often. Um, both in writing and email and like multiple times. Because they'll get, that's my suggestion, because they'll get it and then they're getting ready to open up and they're gonna go off. And then it'll be November and it'll be like, oh, that's right. And they didn't put on their calendar. They forgot and you don't have them there. And you really want um, that group to be at an open house and have be part of that process. So that's my.
Great. Any others, any other thoughts? I mean, I, I also support this. I think, um, and once again, I, I like Holly's point. You know, this is another example, I think of. And my compliments to my predecessors on the council, you know, during COVID, the city had to scramble and they had to move quickly on an issue that wasn't a, a dead simple thing to do. You know, there were people that were like, what, you're going to take parking spaces away? And, you know, there were people that didn't love the idea. Same with the social district, which was another reaction to uh, people not being able to feel comfortable inside. So, um, putting some rigor around it, making it fair so other people can participate that, that, you know, are near these businesses. I think this is all really good. So um, I'm, I'm in favor of it as well. So, so thank you for you know, for the diligence to put the time in this and say we should probably, now is probably the time. And also, another great example, you know, we're putting this out there early. There's a lot of time, so people shouldn't be surprised. They have time to react to it. I think you know, there's, there's a nice, long lead time for, for, for businesses to um, be prepared for this change. So.
Can I ask a question? So as far as for Monday, looking ahead, it says sample motion to be provided by the city council discussion today. So what, what would be the motion that we're actually just to give staff to move ahead with the proposal as submitted?
Something along those lines.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, thanks. Good point out, Garn. Thank you. Okay. Great. Uh, so I think we've, we've got that one down. And now, um, uh, now it's me and Steve and Ryan are uh, on the hook again to talk about the uh, STR Task Force recommendations. Uh, you'll find that on page nineteen. Ryan, you, you want to kick off that really great Friday we spent together, basically from breakfast to dinner?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe the, before that was Steve and, yeah.
I think it's Ryan afterwards. I said, I think I broke the mayor today. So long day of, of interviews, but just kind of quick summary for folks. Um, we've received uh, quite a response and interest from uh, community members um, uh, to serve on the short-term rental task force. So I mean, you know, it's a big issue. Certainly uh, folks are saying, hey, I want to, I want to volunteer my time uh, to, to take on uh, the work uh, that will be involved with uh, being on the task force. So, um, see numerous applications, uh, kind of provided a breakdown of who uh, applied in each group, uh, numbers of residents, non-residents and, and those totals. So everybody could kind of review that in your uh, packet. Uh, uh, planning commission chair Steve Mans took on the uh, momentous task of, of doing phone interviews with the, the applicants uh, upfront. And then he ultimately made some recommendations to uh, Mayor Dean and I of, of kind of who to bring in for uh, in-person interviews. And so so you can see in your packets, uh, we had a marathon session on Friday, uh, March seventeenth. Uh, and then uh, also had an applicant that we interviewed via Zoom on March twentieth. And then after those interviews, um, uh, Monday afternoon, uh, the mayor, Plage, uh, Chairman's and I uh, discussed um, the applicants. Uh, we're able to fully discuss all of our recommendations and, and thoughts on things and, and reach cons- uh, consensus on uh, uh, the, the short-term rental task force members, or at least our recommendation on who they should be. And I'll let Mayor Dean do those honors.
Yeah, and, and one other thing I, I want to point out once again, in the entrance of transparency. Um, unfortunately, you know, the good news is we had more than two dozen folks interested in participating, which is huge and, and exciting. Unfortunately, we did have two candidates for group six whose applications we could not find in the system. Uh, we looked, uh, IT looked at it, Ryan, and uh, so unfortunately, uh, it came to my attention on Tuesday when I was making calls to uh, the folks that I wanted to confirm that they were still interested in participating. Uh, that Kathy Brockington had tried to apply, uh, but her application did not, for whatever reason, process in the system. Uh, also Peter Hanson, they would both have been in um, group six, I believe, uh, which we did have two applicants for. So we did have two people to choose from. Um, I, I apologize on behalf of the city that we weren't able to process their application by the deadline to get this moving. Um, and I did urge them, like I've urged a number of folks uh, that have applied to, to please, please stay engaged. Uh, you know, consider uh, the whole community should really consider themselves ex officio on this and, and really share with the task force. And um, I think we've, we've got a group of people that are, you know, not only do they have the, the right skills, I think they have, they bring the right sort of um, attitude toward a, a task force where it's, it's all about, you know, the common love for the community, wanting it to prosper, you know, wanting to keep this character alive of, of the community. And also to listen and, and to bring a wide range of perspectives. Uh, but once again, I have tried to call some that didn't get on the um, committee. I, I, you know, it was a full day on Friday and, and Monday, Tuesday been crazy. Um, so I, I've really tried to reach out to people. And if, if anyone didn't hear from me, you know, I apologize. I really would urge you, if you're listening in and didn't get on the, on the task force, to please stay engaged. Um, and I do have Steve on um, to help answer questions about our, our thought process. I, I, you know, I really don't want to, you know, sort of like pick, pick favorites, you know, if you're like, why didn't you pick this person, you know, were they, were they that much worse than that person? But I mean, you know, I, I, I want to be some, you know, diplomatic. I mean, these people were all great. And I, nothing makes me happier than people wanting to participate in our community, uh, really. And so I, I just really had to sort of look at this like putting together a basketball team, you know, you, you, you know, you need the, the big tall center. You need the quick agile guards. You need the forwards, you know, you need to sort of put that team together. And you know, and there's that magic too. You try to find it, that magic of people that you think are going to play as a team together and work together and, and listen to each other and support each other. So with, with that, I, I'll, I'll just share my, my thoughts and we, we've got both Steve and Ryan here to to talk as well. But you know, once again, I don't want to really get into a, you know, so-and-so just didn't cut it or so-and-so, you know, I like this person, you know, more. I, I don't think that's fair to anyone.
Mayor, can I say something really quick?
Yeah, of course, Gar.
So it takes a lot of time and energy to interview and select folks for a committee, and not all, all of us can be a part of that. Uh, we don't have the time and we put that, we delegate that authority to you. And in this case, the chairperson at the committee and staff. And therefore, I, I'm not about to start nitpicking about who's on a committee. I thank you for your time and energy. If the Parks and Public Works Committee is any example, it's going to be a great group of people. So stop agonizing.
Well. Friday, I don't know how you feel, Ryan, but Friday really felt like speed dating. And I really wanted to go out for a longer date with all of them, you know, maybe just to get past. So anyways, with, with, with that, um, the person I would like to recommend for um, for, for group one, who's, who's a member of the retail, restaurant or lodging uh, business owning community. It's a name I think you'll all recognize, and that's Sean Steele.
Great.
Awesome. Um, you know, start, start, cha- chain fairy star of Sagatuck, you know, somebody that, not a resident, not a resident, but I, I, I really think I would challenge anybody to not say that Sean doesn't care about the future of this community and, and is heavily involved in it. Um, group number two, a member from the short-term rental property management group, um, Kevin Tringali. I think a lot of folks know Kevin. He's the girls' basketball coach, and he's also an operator of a short-term rental business. Um, I'm very impressed with, with Kevin as, as I were the other candidates. Um, member of the residential zone who holds a short-term rental license and is positive about short-term rentals, uh, Elizabeth Borma. Uh, Elizabeth is, I think, the classic example of, you know, kind of how this all started in Sagatuck. You know, you've, you've got a house and you might be traveling in the winter, you might be traveling in the summer. And, you know, it, it helps with our high property taxes. It helps to be able to have, you know, a family or a group come in and rent your place for a couple of weeks, you know. Uh, so I, I thought Elizabeth would be a good addition. Member of the commercial zone, and this was a hard one, uh, you, the, member of the commercial zone who is not the owner of a short-term rental. Uh, Kathy Hart is, is who I'm recommending. And you've got her, you may not know Kathy, but I was very impressed with her, I think, as was the chair. Um, you know, she, once again, she is sympathetic to the issue. She, you know, she's not a short-term rental here, owner here, but you know, uh, she's got VRBO managing a property for her in Mexico. So, you know, we, we, she does have that connection to it. Like so many of, I think we've just learned so many of us have been involved in this one way or the other. Um, and um, for number five, group five, a member from the real estate and, and realtor community with no short, short-term rental ownership. Um, that's, um, and Gudith, she was actually here earlier. Uh, she's with Jake Way. I always say it wrong. Is it Jackwa or Jake Way Realtors? Jake Way, Jake Way.
Jake Way.
Okay.
No, just hard J.
Anne handles their, Anne handles their short-term rental business. And um, she's actually now, uh, she's working toward getting her real estate license. So I, I think she seemed to act, she seemed to be really engaged, not only in, in the real estate market, but, but in, you know, with the people in the real estate community. And she seemed to know a lot of folks. Um, once again, a very hard choice, you know, lots of highly qualified people uh, for there. And I hope they will, I hope they will all stay involved in this. Um, and then a member of the residential zone who is not a short-term rental owner, but who does feel negatively impacted uh, uh, by short-term rentals in their neighborhood. I was compelled with, with Joe Clark's story because, you know, he loves this community. He's now just nearing retirement and he, he was very frank with us, you know, he's, you know, he was like, you know, I don't know, you know, if, if I can stay. I love this community and he, and he wants to now get involved in doing some of this hard work. You know, he wants to get involved in, in, in our boards and commissions. You know, he wants to give back to the community after having lived here for so long. Um, and so he's very passionate about sort of bringing that perspective to the table. And I, I'd be, would be remiss if I didn't talk about uh, the, the folks around the table and, and on the commission who I would recommend to be our city council representative and our two planning commission representatives. Lauren has graciously agreed to serve as, as the council's rep on the task force. Um, I, I really can't think of a better person to do it. Um, and I, I think Lauren, you know, we all know Lauren, straight shooter, but you know, I think how can we do better but to have Lauren on that committee? Um, and then for, then from planning, um, I have to compliment Steve on the work he's done. This is a huge lift, you know, the, the organization around this and, you know, Steve, you know, vetted two dozen people, you know, and I think did so in a very thoughtful, a very kind of open-minded way. So I'm very complimented. very thoughtful, a very kind of open minded way. So I'm very complimented, complimentary of Steve's performance. And I think on planning, I would ask that 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 Steve be supported by Holly Anderson, who's also on planning and has I think been excellent on planning and also as somebody that speaks my language in terms of strategic communication and and really, you know, being am I going to use the T word? Yeah, I'm going to use the T word, you know, trying to be really transparent about this. And to really help people understand what's going on, to to bring people to the table. And with that, you all can, well, you know, I'll let Steve try to be more articulate about it than I have been. So go ahead, Steve.
Scott, I think you've done an excellent job in kind of explaining our process. You know, the time requirement, you know, I felt that it kind of went with the volunteer position of being the chair of planning. And knowing that if a company receives twenty five or fifty applications for a job, they go through it and many times I'll say, hey, I only want to call and do a phone interview with my top three or four candidates and then bring one or two candidates, candidates in. Looking through the applications and knowing that twenty plus people volunteer or were willing to volunteer their time to be on the task force because they love the community and they want to see what's right. I thought it was really best to make certain that we reached out and we touched base with all twenty four of them. And had we known of the other two, it would have been all twenty six. And as I shared with both you and Ryan, after having those two days of phone interviews, I really felt very proud to be part of the planning commission, part of the process, but also I felt very positive that so many people brought so many qualifications to the table. And as we talked, Scott, you've already said, every one of them, I had said to them during the phone interview, if you are not selected to go into the second round of interviews or selected for the task force, thank you for your willingness. Continue to participate as we are looking to try to do what is right for the community. It's always about what is right for the community long term. And so from that, you tried to look at, you know, what separated a candidate. It's always can be minor as to the way that they kind of expressed their openness or the way that they shared some thoughts of just ideas that they were looking to bring to the task force. And then you kind of compose a list of two candidates, sometimes three in a in one of the stakeholder groups that you thought any combination of this, as you were saying, trying to build a team would work. And then thank, thank you and Ryan for being able to then take on the the role of personally doing the interview with those thirteen candidates. And then the ability for all of us to kind of come back and discuss the pluses that we thought each could bring to the table. But what's six working with the three of us on planning and council would really give us the most diversity? And then also a lot of our consideration fell into looking at, you know, the resident versus non resident because we were asked to at least kind of consider that. Looking at the balance of favorable to short term, neutral to maybe negatively impacted. And even a male and female. And I think that when we put it together, we feel that we've got a very diverse team that represents exactly what we were talking about initially. People who we can kind of work together, reach out to the community, develop kind of a agenda and a timeframe to work with the third party consultant. And, you know, attack this all for the betterment of the community. And I fully support, you know, the ones that you had just recommended, you know, to council. And I would look forward to be a part of the overall task force and working with each of them. I can also say that for the majority of the people that I had the phone interviews with, many of them I was not familiar with, you know, I know we've been in the community for a number of years, but I still have not met many of them. So there was no like, oh, this, but here's your favorite. So in full transparency, it really did come down to looking at each one individually on paper and then through the fifteen to twenty minute phone interviews.
Great. Thanks for that. Ryan, you want to take a break? Was that with that, no, we're open for council discussion.
Get one for planning. Isn't there supposed to be two for planning?
Yes, Steve. Stephen Holly.
It's gonna be Steve Mans. Okay.
Stephen Holly, sorry, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts, council members?
I just want to thank you guys, you know, all the time. Steve, thank you so much. I mean, all the time it took to do this. And the commitment, and Scott, I know you even took some personal time off of work to do this. So, you know, you don't arrive at these decisions lightly and I appreciate and support all your decisions. What I love is, and what I've seen really just kind of starting to happen is more and more people engaging. And that is absolutely fantastic. It's not always the same folks, you know, folks being on, it's it's lots of different people. And that is so absolutely wonderful. You know, Sean Steele. That's awesome. Kevin Tringali, awesome. I mean, these are folks who are already so invested in the community, but have never taken this extra step. I just love, now they're hooked. But I think it's great. And some names I don't, people I don't even know, which is even better, that we have that type of interest and it speaks very highly of what y'all are doing. And I thank you for that. So it's excellent. Farm team.
Remember Lewis's comments and I know it's and I I know it takes just to interview people and just to have to get through all this and twenty four residents and everybody with competing agendas and that. And I'm happy with the list. I think it looks like a wonderful list. I know most of these people, several of them. And I think that I think we're going to get it done. Appreciate your help.
Thank you. Other council members?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say thank you to Ryan, thank you to Scott, and thank you to Chairman Mans, who I've had a lot of conversations with around this process. I appreciate the sharing of the applications in the packet today so we can see exactly who applied and their backgrounds. Any one of them would have been a good choice for this task force, in my opinion. And Ann Guth probably didn't tell you, but her dad Hank Guth was a major institution in this community for a long, long time in governmental affairs. So her dad was Hank, personal friend of mine, and served with him on a number of different things. So she's got some government background, so don't let her fool you.
And I know I'll just add on that because I I know, you know, when we talked earlier, it was like, you know, you certainly you you couldn't have any non residents on this. Well, we do, and I and I think their their bios and their reputations are unimpeachable in terms of their commitment to the community, you know, they they may be just doing business here. But I I just think their reputations and their networks within the community are are just unimpeachable. So thank you for raising that, Russ.
Yeah, Anne's probably going to be mad at me for calling her out, but.
And and that I I would just add that that speaks to the interconnectedness, you know. So I'm really happy with the list and I want to thank you for the amount of time. I want to thank Steve Mans. I'm sure when he agreed to be the Chair of Planning Commission, he never imagined the fun he was going to have. So I really, I mean, we are trying to do hard things and I just really want to acknowledge Lauren, who might be a little busy this summer, but nonetheless. Also, because she knows that this is a really important issue that we need to tackle and frankly, we should have done this years ago. So that's partly why this is so, gosh darn difficult.
And and you do make a great point, Holly. And I would suggest, and once again, I I, you know, I want to set this task force free, but given what Lauren's got on her plate and given what Steve's got on her plate that we need, you know, a board and commission sort of sort of leadership, I, Holly, I hate to put you on the spot, but I I would be really happy if you would sort of take the lead on this. I I think you'd be ideal if if, you know, because you because you do.
Not to push on us.
Well, thank you. That would be, that would be my recommendation. You know, you may have, you may have on the first meeting an insurrection. I don't know, but I I'm just going to put it on the record right now that I I would and I'll say it again on Monday, that that I really think, Holly, you would be very well suited to represent, you know, one of our commissions and sort of act as as a leader because, you know, I think it's going to be a good group and I think I think everyone's going to work really well together, but you do need somebody kind of to chair the meetings and kick them off. So.
Oh, Holly, you are saving my life.
Honestly, thank you so much for putting this group together. It's a great group. I'm happy to be involved and really happy that Holly's going to lead the team on that. But looking forward to being involved with this and I appreciate the team that you've put together.
Thanks, Lauren. Any final thoughts on this?
Just a thank you, Steve or Scott. Sorry. Talking to so many people, I thank Steve already at the end of the meeting. I kind of fumbled my words a little bit, but I want to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing, that you're also doing, Scott, that couldn't have been hard the last couple of days of calling people, interview or easy, calling people, interviewing people and all that. I really appreciate the time that you put into that. And I'm really proud to be a part of a board that's ready to tackle something that has been on the back burner for a long time. And so I'm glad that we're going forward with this. It's something that needed to be done and and looking forward to what we find out.
Thanks. Great. I think we're, we've had a little comments on that. Okay.
It's been patiently.
Thank you so much for being patient for, this was one of our bigger days. We're at Red Six E, the Solberg Doc Request. And I think this is over to you, which you had an easy night.
I can talk about docs and QR codes.
You've all been very patient. Your bladders have been very patient. Could I just, a motion to a five minute recess? Is that how we do it? Five minute recess, second, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Motion to beckon. All right, I'd like a motion to return to session.
So moved.
Motion Baldwin, second, Muncie, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
All right, recess is over. We have returned to a session. And that takes us, thank you so much for being patient with us. We are at succeed the silver doc request. Ryan, this is for you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as you said, this is on page one fifteen if you, on your packet, if you're following along. We heard from the very patient Mr. Solberg earlier in public comments. Mr. Solberg is trying to accomplish two things. He wants to make improvements. He wants to have a new doc. And we also heard about some some stair improvements that he'd like to make. He's willing to make those improvements only under, with the understanding that he's going to be able to have his five year lease renewed. And so that's the the agenda topic for your action on Monday. We reviewed this with the attorney. You'll see in the a a cover page here that Mr. Solberg will still need to apply for a minor waterfront construction permit. He still will need to go through Eagle and any other regulatory agency that's needed. So I I happy to answer any questions on this.
A a questions from council?
I have a question. So just to be clear, so this is just a renewal?
This is a five year renewal, correct?
And the date, it says.
Dates are off. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Solberg had mentioned that and I thought I had corrected those, but I apparently had not. So those dates are off by you're referring to the dates that he had made offers to Saga Tuck for the purchase of that parcel. Mr. Solberg understands why the city was not open to that idea.
Great. All right. Awesome. So any further council discussion? This will be on the agenda for a vote on Monday.
With this is a a renewal that we already have. Okay. I'm just trying to remember because we, was this, was there a different one that was in front of us like last year?
Purchase, I believe. Request to purchase. This is just a renewal.
Got it. Yeah. Keeping it all straight.
And has the price changed at all or is it?
Yeah, we put in our consumer price index change, which we do for all of our license.
Okay, real good on that one. That will be on for Monday.
Sorry, there wasn't a giant discussion about it.
Thanks for, thanks for bearing with us. Now, this one I think actually might be a lot of fun to talk about. This is six, this is six G, QR code. Another fun one, six F Doc Agreement, Street Ends on page twenty twenty five. They came up in discussion earlier. So let's let's get right into it, Ryan.
Yeah, this is a housekeeping item annually. We renew our license for street end leases for docs. We apply the CPI each year. We have some attachments for your viewing pleasure. One, we have a map of where these docs are located. We made that last year for you all because there's some confusion on what we own. Jamie and company put together this spreadsheet here, which identifies correlates, the numbers in the left column correlate with these doc locations. So we we thought that would be helpful. And then we have the standard boilerplate license agreement in the packet as well. And so what we'll be asking, oh, and I do want to mention, because this came up earlier, you'll see the the last sentence and the description on the cover page. I note that there are three additional five year agreements being reviewed for a future staff recommendation. That's the one that's most important is the Cook Park Agreement. That's where we have our our docs out there and that kind of correlates to the boardwalk. We have two other five year agreements that we need to review as well. We wanted to get this one moving for, so Mr. Solberg could start applying for his permits. So anyways, these are annual renewals and this will be for your attention on Monday as well. I'm happy to answer any questions if you haven't.
Yeah, thank you, manager. Two questions. One is the balance due, I'm assuming pound sign RAF is just an error in the formula, is my assumption. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me check on that, but I'm sure it is.
Sure, that's what it is. Two is that last year we had asked for, and I believe that the city clerk had produced a worksheet that also included the name of the entity or personal name of the property of the leasing that was helpful. So I'd like to see, I'd personally like to see that back.
Sure thing. Thank you for that.
Anything else on this one?
I'd like to echo Russ's comment, the the pound ref makes me nervous because I see numbers, like I haven't gone through and done any of this math by hand. But typically that means you're referencing a bad cell and typically those cells are copied down. So I just want to make sure that we check the math on that before we make them, make an approval on ordinance because that that shouldn't be there with everything having numbers in the cells.
Excellent. Thank you.
Spreadsheet's very exciting.
I'm glad, I I'm glad we have a few. It makes me happy that we have a few spreadsheet fans on the council. I mean, we need, once again, we need, we need the diversity.
I guess that's what you call it.
Great. If if nothing further on that, that will, that will be before us on Monday. Six G, now this one, this one I'm really excited about. It's one of the things why I don't have to think. I just point my phone at something and it gives me information and, you know, and I I guess that's where we're all headed with artificial intelligence anyway. So, Ryan, six G.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the subject on this one is a QR code for the Oval Beach Day Passes. And I was sitting around thinking one day, which is dangerous. It was a thought that was triggered by our discussion that we had about the inner urban, actually, is what started me thinking, going down this path. We have Oval Beach Day Passes. And back in the day, I was told that on the backside, businesses were allowed to advertise on these beach passes for the low, low cost of like three hundred bucks. There's like eight businesses that participated and they would just rotate those day passes with the with the business name on them at the beach. Last year we sold forty one thousand day passes and we don't have anything on the backside of these right now. So I thought, well, maybe this is a good opportunity to advertise it in our urban somehow on the back of these day passes, which have little stickies on them and they fit, you know, they face you and people usually don't tear them off until they get home to their destination. These are tourists, right? And they're probably a self service at that time because at Oval Beach, you don't have self service currently. So you can't use them until you know, you get to Park Street or whatever. Anywho, I thought, who better to have the QR code as far as the homepage where this, the QR code will send you than the CVB? And the CVB because they keep up to up to speed on who's open as far as restaurants and retail and then current events.
Current events, yeah.
And so like as a tourist, what are you interested in? Like, where can I go eat and what's going on? And then boom, a little plug for the inner urban at the same time. And so the CVB would actually create a a page dedicated to this QR code and can modify it as needed. CVB, they talked about it. They're very open to it, very excited about the idea. I reached out to Phyllis. We're playing phone tag at the moment, but I wanted to make sure she was comfortable and she didn't feel like this is going to be operational overload for inner urban. So I haven't communicated with her, but she's got two emails and a phone call into her and she's returned my phone call at this point. So anyways, happy to answer any questions on this topic.
And this is free of charge for these?
Charge. I think it's a mutual benefit. Up up the inner urban use.
Two words. Love it. Yeah.
What's a downtown parking pass?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. And they also included downtown parking passes. So the school.
Oh, when you say, I understand. I know what that is. Okay.
Okay, great. Everybody love that?
Everybody loves this.
Everybody loves this.
See how easy this is, RC. Come on, man.
You know, I thought you were the one that everybody loved and he was the one. No, see, is it switched today, didn't it?
It's all about world peace.
I go back and forth.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um, so that wraps up our discussion items for our workshop. Thank you all for your patient. Uh, patience. And now for, for the folks on the line and in the audience that were patient enough to stay with us for. Oh, um, two and a half hours. Um, we have public comment available. Uh, you can comment on anything you would like. Uh, three minutes, please. Just approach the podium, state your name and address. Um, I don't see any takers on pub. Oh. You can come up and just, just to manage your expectations. During public comment, it's not really a, a Q and A type thing, but if you put the question out there, I'm sure we'll take a note of it and. You know, quite often we, we could get back to you, but it sounds awkward, but we really can't start to. Yeah, come on up.
It's just the applications being processed. I didn't understand. It sounded like you guys tabled it, but I don't know.
No, I will answer this just because I, I understand your. Yeah, uh, no, we, we haven't taken any action. That was the whole kind of purpose. This was only a deliberative meeting. You know, we, we took no votes on anything, so there was nothing, no policy was made tonight.
Okay.
So it's, yes. No, it's been parked. We've parked it.
Like parked, so then what happens to our applications?
Uh, just as normal, no, as normal.
As normal.
As normal. As per normal.
Yep.
As per normal.
Get it in.
With all the other ones. Um, so.
No, I know.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine. I think I was like the first one that you had on your bottom of your pile.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let you two go through that pile of guy.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, that was, it's Allison, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. She spoke in the first open.
Thank you, Allison. Yeah, thank you. Um. Uh, now I'm gonna go over, I think, to the Zoom call. Steve, uh, you've been very patient with us as well. Go, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, I just wanted to say on behalf of planning. Thank you to the council today for the consideration. And I, on the planning commission, and I think I had an opportunity to speak with, you know, Scott and Ryan's. When we were looking at this, we said, yes, this is something that we felt that the council needed to discuss and consider. And that was our motion was to. Present it to you for discussion and consideration on both moratoriums, which I do think both of them are very different and they can be kind of viewed independently. So on behalf of planning, I thank all the comments that came through, where you said how much you appreciate the work of the planning commission. I think the planning commission plays a vital role. In working with council and trying to determine what is best for the community. Of Sagatuck as well as the tri-community as we move forward with the master plan. But to each of you. The thoughtfulness and the time that you take it to kind of consider, you know, what is best. And I have to kind of agree that once we hire. A third party consultant, we can hear what they have to say and if they would recommend that we move forward with anything. But it was a good decision, at least I think, put it on the, on the workshop agenda for you all to discuss and give the community now a second opportunity. To voice what, how they feel. And I think we have a very clear feeling, you know, of, of some of the difference of opinions. So I thought it was very positive experience, even though I know it, maybe it was a little hand wretched for many people and time consuming. But I thank council today for this and I think you would make it a very wise decision in kind of not bringing it up on Monday and moving forward till we have a third party. But and I'm, I'm assuming I'm gonna speak on behalf of the other planning commission members who I will reach out to, to make certain that they kind of feel the same way. Um, but I, I believe from when I left the meeting on Thursday that everyone felt that we wanted council to discuss it. But we were fully supportive of whatever council's decision was. And so I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Ethan, you're, um, you're up next. Uh, just feel free to unmute.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So Ethan Barty, uh, quaint cottages, um, property owner and manager in Sagatuck for the last uh twenty years. Um, previous life I was in manufacturing, um, hired consultants to tell us how to run our business. Got a lot of good things out of them. But no one knew our business better than we do our business. So I'd just like to make comment to the council to. You know, I think it's a great idea to get outside help, but nobody knows the town better than us and the community. So I think you really need to, you know, look to your task force, make sure their community. Taxpayers, invested people. And really listen to them. Um. The. Sagatuck has been. Uh, a vacation destination for. Hundred years. I mean, you know, ten, ten, fifteen years ago, you could say Airbnb, VRBO, nobody knew what that was. We are a unique community. We all know that. Maybe we can teach a consultant in the world some things about. Vacation rentals and about towns and about what it takes when our only. Thing is tourism. So. I just want to make sure that the council listens to the townspeople, listens to people that have been coming for a hundred years. And the people that live here and invested. And listen to the count, to the consultants that you're gonna pay a lot of money for. Listen to them, but listen to your people more. You know, we have rules, you have ordinances, you have noise ordinance, you have occupancy, you have parking. You have fire code. You have a lot of these things already in place. If you were just to. Enforce them, spend a little money to enforce. Maybe your problems will go away and you don't, and you can spend the money on someone to police it instead of the. Thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars you're gonna spend on a consultant. So I just caution. Trusting a consultant to come in with a cookie cutter idea for Sagatuck when Sagatuck is not cookie cutter. We are a unique community. And I think we can teach the world a thing or two about a destination. That's all.
Thank you, Ethan. Uh, Suresh, you're up next.
Uh, Suresh from six forty-seven Butler Street, uh, voting resident. And I, I'm really enthused by the work. That has been done today and I applaud everyone uh that joined and everyone that participated in the conversation to, to make some of these tough decisions um that have been made today. I know there was much discussion about the short term rental moratorium and the short term rental. Task force. And even though I didn't make it, I just want to say I'm very pleased at the process that was followed. Um, and I, I'm really pleased that I got to meet many of the people uh that have been uh that are, that are here, Steve Mans. Mayor Dean, you know, a lot of the people that are, you know, very engaged in, in the community as well. You know, regarding the moratorium, I, I am very grateful. Um, to the council for, you know, really thinking about the negative impacts that the moratorium could have had. And it could have had to many people, um, you know, in light of, you know, potential, you know, heavy inflation. Uh, a looming recession, you know, a lot of these things that could be happening in our environment that. Could have negatively financially impacted a lot of people who have. Short term rentals that are either being built, short term rentals that are either being renovated, um, short term rentals that are on the cusp of being approved. Um, that could have had a really detrimental impact to a lot of those investments that are being made into a town, I think that we all agree that we all love. Um, so I, I think. You know, I'm very grateful for the decision that was made, that were made. I'm also very grateful because there are many people, and again, I've been in a lot of the meetings. But there's a lot of people that don't know what we're discussing in these forums. There's a lot of people in our community that don't participate here. So how do we get those messages out, whether it be through forums that might still not know about this. Potential moratorium that's still kind of in this parking lot. And might not never even know about it and until something's in place. So I, I'd encourage us to maybe. Think about that a little bit, about how to get those messages out into our community, because. I, I got it because I subscribe to the newsletter or whatnot, but there may be a lot of people that still don't know about. What we're discussing here in these forums that might be impacted by the decisions that get made. Uh, by, by some of these, by some of these uh task forces and committees. Regarding the third party consultant, I just want to make one final comment. I agree with the last person that spoke, but I would love just more visibility into how that. How the third party consultant is being selected and maybe some of the different questions that are being asked. We talked about transparency. I don't know if that's completely transparent to me. Um, or anybody else on this call. So I would just like maybe more transparency about how the third party consultant is being uh questioned. The RFP process that's being put out there, maybe some of the questions that are being asked and some of the responses that are being given as well.
Thank you, Suresh. Uh, Severin, you're, you're up, um.
Oh, hi there. I just want to say thank you for um not voting on the moratorium. This was a very important issue for, for me and my partner. Uh, that could be um life changing in a bad ways. I, I thank you for not voting on that. Um, I also have a question uh which is related to the moratorium and short term rental. Uh, problem about affordable housing in the area. I remember there was a um meeting last year. I think it was November. Uh, I'm not sure who organized that, but it was for local uh business owners, which I attended. And I'm not sure if something was done since that meeting. I never heard any update on any. Idea how to solve the issue of affordable housing in our, in our town. Um, I know there was lots of ideas. There was idea of, of creating um. Volunteer task that would be responsible for writing. A grant and maybe applying for some money and, and taking money to the community. But I never heard back, so I assume that nothing is being uh done at this point. So I wonder how this, this issue of affordable, affordable housing. Which is extremely related to uh short term rentals. Uh, how is it being approached by the city and is there anything done? Is there, is it part of the master plan, which I, I am not familiar with? If it is, I, I, I don't know, but um, so yeah, that's, that's my question.
Uh, thanks, Severin. Um, it, it's some extremely meaty question and, you know, once again, this is not sort of the deliberative part of the meeting. So. You know, a, a simple, you know, will my application be processed? Yes or no question? We, we can sort of handle, but. Um, we're, we're really not at the point where we can have something like, that would be more of a new business, but, but your comment has been noted, so thank you. Uh, any other folks on the Zoom that wish to make comment? With that, I am going to close public comment. Um, we've got your court, you've got your correspondence in the packet. Uh, that takes us to council comments. Um. I will go around the horn. Helen, you want to kick it off?
Uh, just want to reiterate, thank you to planning and to you for getting the task force together. I'm optimistic about it. I think it looks good. Um, again, democracy in action. I want to thank everybody who came out to make their voices heard and uh I want to make sure that we are thoughtful and deliberative and um. And I, and I believe that we all uh. Have what it takes to get this done. It's gonna be a heavy lift, but um, I'm happy to be part of the team.
Um, same here. Happy to be part of the team. Thank you to everybody. Um, thank you. To everyone. Uh, it's quite clear how, you know, we kind of shown our process here and uh that um. And uh would like to see this much participation on other meetings as well. It was nice to see everybody here. Um, and uh, I, I can't tell you how many phone calls, emails, and I have friends on. On both sides of wanting the moratorium and not wanting the moratorium. And. My ear has been going this way and that way and this way and that way. So I've been a lot of places about it. And um. I know I've reached out to a couple of my council members about, about the subject as well the last couple of weeks. So. Uh, well, the last week and a half or so. Um, but uh, I appreciate all the time uh that uh, that we're putting into it. And again, I'll repeat, I'm proud to be a part of a team. That's ready to face a challenge um that needs to be faced.
I cannot add anything to what has already been said by these two members. So.
Thank you, Holly.
I'll just say that I appreciated the tone of this meeting. Um, you know, this is something that everybody's very passionate about and we have a lot of dollars involved. Um, but I appreciated the tone of this meeting and I hope we continue that tone going forward.
Thank you. Uh, just grateful and um very humbled by serving for this community as well as everybody that came out to speak today. On a positive note, next Thursday, March thirtieth at noon at the Holland Rotary, Eric, Alonick and I will be making a presentation on Mount Baldhead at their request. So. Uh, we continue to get a lot of interest in terms of our efforts there. And the bank parking lot was mentioned briefly. So we're waiting a status from Huntington National Bank. They're supposed to close on that. So. Uh, I've been working with Liz Wilson at the school to see continued use of that for school fundraising. So. Waiting for an answer from the bank on their closing.
Really quickly, uh, last, I was not here at the last regular meeting because I was at my first travel commission meeting up in Petoskey. Um, uh, I was one of three newly appointed folks and it was a very um. Uh, educational session. We reviewed our strategic plan and are updating it for the entire state. And uh Severin, and folks, you'll be happy to know that the issues that we're facing are the issues that are being faced by um folks. Involved with travel commission all over the state. Uh, the gal that owns Mission Point uh Resort on Mackinac Island. Uh, they have staffing issues. They have housing issues. They have short term rental issues. Everybody, those were the three major topics that we talked about and are a focus for the travel commission. Um, one thing I wanted to share with you and I'll, I'll mention this again, because I want to get the word out and I made it really clear when I was there that. Have, being the first person from this area on the commission, they've never hosted a meeting here and now I'm on a mission to get them here. So I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking for a, a location that was, is going to house fifteen to eighteen people. And so I need everybody's help because we'll wanna, I'd prefer to have them in, in Sagatuck. And uh, so the word can get out that uh we're, we're looking to bring folks here to town. It'll probably be in the fall. Um, that would be the best bet probably.
Real, Hunt Realty dot com.
Be all in the same location. So that's, that's the real challenge. It has to be in a location that fits everybody. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Karen. Um, once again, you know. Thank you to everyone that came and participated and, and had their voices heard. It's, it's valued. It really is. And um, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Um, you know, it's great to be part of this team. Um, you know, sometimes. These things we do are, are a marathon, not a sprint. And I really admire and appreciate all of your endurance as we go through this. Um. Ryan, I, I do want to flag though, we've got a major um court appearance before Judge Genghis tomorrow. You will. Be attending that. I would, I would love to be there, but I, I really can't take any more vacation and I'll, I'll be in Lansing uh tomorrow. So um. I, I think we can expect a report from you on any, and Kyle or Jake, sorry. From our esteemed council, I'm really gonna expect a report on how that goes on Thursday. It's a fairly significant hearing, so. Oh, yeah, please go ahead.
Just a comment. Go ahead, Jake.
The extent that there is a result uh tomorrow.
Yeah.
Absolutely reported. There is a, there's a chance. I mean, there's. A lot of competing motions. There's a chance the judge might just take it under advisement. So we'll get a decision right away. If you don't hear from us, that doesn't necessarily mean it's bad news. We're hiding from you. Might take a while to get that.
How many motions?
Seven.
Seven motions in an elegant county courthouse.
Helen, you're going, right?
Uh, my husband is.
All right.
Sending representative.
One last thing, one last thing.
Well, yeah, if you see a, a gaggle of attorneys there from Fahey Schultz, they're not all on the clock. They all have like a personal interest in this because they've been working so long on it. So there's gonna be quite a few of them that are gonna be there on their own time.
Okay, great.
Can we get our lawyers to do this?
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this gaggle.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, standing, second.
Leo.
All in favor.
The second half was a lot better than the first.